Welcome to the school committee meeting of Wednesday, November 20th, 2019. Tonight, we are at the Callahan Elementary, so welcome. If I could ask everybody to please join us for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So before we go through the agenda, I just wanted to let everybody know that Morris Smith is unable to join us tonight. She's not feeling well, but she extended her apologies for missing everything that we'll be covering this evening. So first on the agenda is approval of minutes. You should have your, in your packet, the executive session minutes from Monday, November 4th, as well as the regular business meeting on the floor. Motion to approve?
Seconded.
Any discussion? All favor. Dr. Thompson, do you correspond to me tonight?
We do, and it's actually addressed to me, but I think it's important to share with the entire community to make sure that they know. Yes, we did approve the flyer, but we were asked, or I was asked by the Circle of Hope, to approve a flyer, so I'll just read the letter really quick. Dear Dr. Thompson, The Norwood Circle of Hope Foundation has received permission from the Board of Selectmen to use the town common on Saturday, December 7th. From 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., we'll be selling luminary candles and lighting up the perimeter of the common as part of a remembrance night. And then they requested permission, so we have done that. There will be approximately 2,000 luminary bags. And if you look on the back, that is a flyer that has been sent home. I just wanted to share that with you and make a note of it to the community.
Thank you. Next up is warrants. The warrants tonight are behind Strava Tanya by Donna. If everybody could sign those before you leave, in the packet in front of you, we do have a few warrants to sign. We have two payroll warrants, first in the amount of $100,525.34, second for $1,549,929.62. Then we have a buildings and grounds warrant for $18,554.76, three food services, first in the amount of $1,511.73, second for $3,768, and the third for $631.68. Two accounts payable warrants, first in the amount of $30,715.9, and second for $45,163.73, grand total of $1,750,799.95. At this time, it is public forum. Is anybody here to speak with us tonight in public forum? Okay, seen none. Public forum is closed. Moving on to announcements. Dr. Thompson?
I'll save those for the superintendent's report, so I don't have any other announcements.
Okay. I'll share a brief announcement. So just an hour before I came here tonight, John Rogers, who is our representative in the House, called me to let all of us know that the Student Opportunity Act has now unanimously been endorsed and passed by both the House and the Senate, and it is now on the desk of the governor, waiting to be signed. He said he will call me as soon as that happens. But you sounded very positive that that signing of the bill would happen. And just to share a little information around that for everybody, as we've talked about before, the funding of education is outdated, hasn't really been revamped since 1993. It is now almost 2020. And in 2015, there was the foundation budget review that called out four areas of funding in education, one around low-income families, one around ELL, one around special education, and then the fourth around the healthcare cost of employees. And under the Student Opportunity Act, funding will increase in all four of those areas. He said he will get the specifics to me soon on what that means for Norwood, so I don't have any specific numbers, but all positive possibilities ahead. And then one brief thing he told me tonight, which I did not realize, is that under this act, the circuit breaker money will also now include reimbursement for special education transportation, which we have not been reimbursed for that. So I was very happy to hear that. So I just wanted to pass that information along to everybody. Okay, so now we have a number of appearances. First is a appearance on the alumni weekend with Mr. McHale.
If I could just pass out some pamphlets of what the alumni weekend will include.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Thompson, Chairperson Stewart, and members of the committee for allowing me to speak today in regards to the upcoming Alumni and Hall of Fame Weekend. Alumni Weekend will begin, of course, with our Thanksgiving Day football game, which will be held at Dedham this year. Nice to know that Norwood Community Media will be filming that live, so you'll be able to see that and streaming it at home, so we're very fortunate to have that with Norwood Community Media. Also have a little wager going on between the two principals at Norwood and Dedham. As you know, Hugh Gallagher, the principal at Norwood, lives in Dedham, and Jim Torres, the principal at Dedham, lives in Norwood. So there's a wager going on, so we're excited about the game on Thursday. Of course, with the start of the holiday season, many high school reunions will be taking place, including my own, class of '74 here, and there were quite a few, and you can see on the flyer some of the other that are going on, '74, '79, 2004, and 2009. Also beginning that, we're going to be having a display case for the class of '74 and ' '84 up in the walking track that will be available for people to come in and see. And the alumni and community members are invited to visit the high school on Saturday, November 30th, and the 10th, the 2019 Hall of Fame induction. Reception for the family and friends of the inductees will take place at noon time in the dining hall, with the ceremony taking place in the auditorium at 1:00 p.m. And you know Jack Tolman, the Vice President of the Hall of Fame, will be there, doing an amazing job as he does with all his videos, and those videos will coordinate with all the inductees that are coming in. Again, that will also be live on Norwood Community Media, so we're pretty excited about that. This year's inductees include six decades of coaches and athletes at Norwood High School. And just a little bit about some of the inductees. The first, Bruce Gregory, was a wrestling coach at Norwood High from 1973 to 1984. He had the good fortune to wrestle for Coach Gregory, and his resume is pretty extensive. He has probably had more individual state and New England champions. The wrestling program during his tenure was one of the tops in the state, and we're really looking forward to and recognizing Coach Gregory. Then from the class of 1957, we have William Winstone being inducted. He was a football, outstanding football and track athlete. In 1967, we have our first state wrestling champ, Ken Sheen, is being inducted. Ken has passed away, and he'll be posthumously inducted, and family members will be there, but an outstanding wrestler, but also a great football player, went on to play at Harvard. Then from the class of 1982, we have John DeCaligirio, who was also an outstanding football player, as well as a great track athlete. During the '80s, '70s, and '80s, Norwood had some of the finest track athletes and some of the greatest number of state champions, and John was one of them. Then from the class of 1990, we have Sue Drummy Daly, who was a three-sport athlete at Norwood from field hockey, basketball, and softball. And from the class of 1992, another track athlete, Mike Whittier. Mike is presently out at sea with the Navy. He's a career Navy man, and unfortunately, won't be able to make it, but we'll have family members there, and we're trying to see if we can get a video presentation to take place, you know, for his induction. And then finally, from the class of 2001, we have Jim Martin. Jim was another great athlete at Norwood. Baseball was his main sable, was also a captain of the hockey team, also on the golf team. He's presently the assistant varsity coach at Stony Brook College in New York. So really excited about this year's group of inductees, and again, just I want to thank the committee for allowing me to get the word out about them, and really hope to see people come in. It's a great way to come in and kind of start the holiday season. Some alumni who may have never had a chance to see the school will be able to do that. The ceremony is free to everybody, so we encourage people to come in, and just a good way to start the holiday season and recognize some of Norwood's greatest athletes. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you so much.
Thank you.
So tonight, we've had the last round of our school improvement plans with four of the elementaries. And first on our agenda is Mrs. Robbins from the Willet and LMPA. How are you?
Good.
Thanks for joining us.
Yeah, thank you for having me. So I have to apologize, I went and I printed out my notes for my presentation, but didn't actually print out my actual improvement plan. So if it's okay, I'd like to just be able to reference it on my computer. So I apologize for that. My efforts to be paperless, I may have been too fisted.
We probably all envy that you have that and we have this.
Yeah. So I do apologize, and I hope it doesn't block your view too much, I'll try to. All right, so I'm here tonight to present the school improvement plan for the Little Mustangs Preschool Academy and Willet Early Childhood Center. First thing I'd like to do is just thank you for allowing me to move to this meeting, because I was originally scheduled to be on for October 23rd. We had a very happy situation at the Willet and LMPA, which is that we had more parents interested in being on our school council than we had slots. And so we had to run an election at our PTO meeting, which got a late start with our school council, and I do really value the input they provide to the school improvement plan, and wanted to be able to have them have a couple meetings before we could present. So I appreciate the opportunity to go a little bit later than anticipated. I'd also like to thank the members of their school council for their help and guidance in creating this year's school improvement plan. From our staff, we have Patty Doucette, Ann Watson, Joan McLean, and Michelle McCarthy. And then our parent representatives this year are Dustin Jones, Sarah Griffin, Kristy Cochran, and Sumriddy John. So I would like to thank all of them for their contributions to this as well. So I'll start by talking a little bit about some key talking points from our demographic data. And I will try to keep my presentation brief, because I do know that we have several this evening, and we want to get through it in a timely manner. Just one thing to note is according to the state, the LMPA and the Willet are still one school, so when they present data on our DESI report, so to speak, it is an aggregate of the two buildings. But for the purposes of the school improvement plan, I thought it would be helpful to actually break it down this year by kindergarten and Little Mustangs Preschool Academy, and that's partly because the two buildings function somewhat differently, and the two programs do function differently. And some of the data was being skewed a little bit by some of the Little Mustangs data, because we don't collect all of the same data for preschool as we do for kindergarten. So that's why I broke down into the two different grade levels. So in terms of kindergarten cohort size, we are continuing around our usual mean. Last year happened to be actually small cohort for kindergarten. This year, I just wanted to let you know that we are at 275 as of today. So we generally tend to be around that 280 mark. Last year was small, but this year we're back up a little bit, and by the end of the year, I anticipate we'd probably be at 280 again. I did not report the first language not English. That was one point that I wasn't able to disaggregate down to the kindergarten level because of the way the state reports it, but this is that one data point that does get skewed by the preschool, because they look at both the preschool and the kindergarten all together, but because we aren't necessarily identifying our preschool English language learners, when you look at the state number for our first language not English, it looks much smaller than what it really is. And so to just kind of give you a reference point for what our numbers look like this year, and again, I know in our school improvement plans, we don't necessarily report this year's data, but I think it's helpful for you guys to know, when I ran the report for home language not English for kindergarteners, 45% of our cohort has a home language other than English. And there of our, 27.6 of our kindergarteners are enrolled in a limited English proficient program, so our LEP program.
What was that, 27.6?
27.6. I think it says 27.4 in here, so we must have added another student or something since I wrote this. So that was as of today. So, and I think probably the most telling number is that 45% of our families are coming from a home in which English is not the first language. That's almost half. So it is a growing population. And kind of one of the points I wanted to say in regard to our EL population is a big thank you to you, because you did this year approve an increase in EL teachers, which we saw a positive impact. We're going to be increasing from 1.5 to 2.0 next week at the Willet. We have 76 students who are being serviced for English as a second language, and we really need those two full-time folks. And really, the impact there, just so you have some concrete sort of visual for that, is we had students, we had groups of eight Level 1 ELs in a group meeting with our ESL teacher. Eight is not a small group in kindergarten. Three or four is a small group in kindergarten, so with the addition of that .5, we're able to break up some of those Level 1 and 2 groups that are bigger. In fact, I went to go observe in one of the EL classrooms, and I said, "Oh, this is okay." I said, "This group is big," and it was six kids, and I said to Mrs. Fulham, I said, "This group's kind of big." She's like, "Yeah, and two are absent." And I was like... So we're very happy to get that relief. So I do want to thank the school committee for approving that increase. In regards to demographic data for the preschool, I think it's always important to note that with preschool, we have continuous enrollment, and I know most of you know that, but it's helpful to remember that, because the data that you see here in this report really reflects what our numbers look like in October, when the SIMS report gets caught, but whereas we may start at 105 to 110 students, we end the year with about 130 to 135, because we are continuously adding those three-year-olds who are continuing to become eligible for our program. In terms of some demographic information regarding the preschool, that's important to be just mindful of, while it's not reflected in state data, we are seeing an increase in student need, specifically students with ASD and autism spectrum disorder and other complex developmental delays. This increased level of student need maxes out all of our resources at the preschool, because students with more complex needs require a lot of different, a wide variety of services. So for example, one of our speech, our full-time speech and language pathology pathologist at the preschool has a caseload that starts around 40 at the beginning of the year and increases to 65 by the end of the year. 65 students for speech services in preschool. You start to look at groups of four and five again, and in preschool, speech with a child who has a significant language delay, really your best practice, you're looking at groups of two or one, one-to-one. So, you know, that's just another area that I just want to make you aware of, because, you know, there may be times when I'm coming back here to advocate for additional resources, and it's because we are seeing this increase. I was just speaking with Emily Kai, who's my team leader this morning, or this afternoon, rather, and she noted that we typically do about 50, anywhere between 45 and 50 EI referrals each year at the preschool, so we're evaluating 45 to 50 students, 50 children. We have already initiated evaluations on 31 students at this point in the year, and we're not even halfway through. So we are projected to go beyond what we usually are evaluating. So we're just seeing more and more kids coming out of early intervention. We also get referrals from parents and other pediatricians and other agencies and things like that. We typically get about between 12 and 15 of those. We've already gotten 10 of those this year, and we're not, we're not even halfway through. So I just want to kind of put it on your radar that our demographics are, you know, continuing, our need is continuing to increase at the preschool.
Can I clarify something?
Absolutely.
So the rolling, that is just the students who age out of early intervention, that is not our peer models.
Correct. Our peer models enroll, and they have to be three or four by August 31st, and so, and we do not do rolling enrollment, rolling enrollment for peers.
And it's usually 2.9 that they're on our radar from early intervention?
From early intervention, they usually inform us, yeah, about three months before their third birthday, they reach out to Emily and say, "This child's coming across, across your radar," and then we start to set up the evaluation and meeting, so that on their third birthday, they're ready to start.
Right, thank you.
Yeah. All right. So going into, oh, the other thing I wanted to point out is that we started in our preschool fuller this year than we ever have, and we're a little bit worried even this year that we are going to kind of be really stretching our compliance with our ratios, because we need to have that eight, eight peers to seven students on IEPs is our ratio, and we're a little worried we're going to be out of whack on that by the end of the school year, just because we know that we're getting more and more students. We had to add a section, second section of packs, because we have 12 students who need that profile right now, just had one move in, so that's just constantly adding on. So before I go into the goals for my school improvement plan, there were a couple topics I was asked to report on that aren't really part of the school improvement plan, but were questions that came out from Chairperson Stewart, and so I just wanted to speak very briefly to a couple of those topics. So one of the questions that she had asked and posed to me was whether or not there was enough of a reflection of developmentally appropriate practice within the school improvement plan for the Little Mustangs and the Willet. So there's sort of this decades-long debate in early childhood education around developmentally appropriate practice versus academic rigor, and is it one or the other? Is it a blend? Is it, what balance do we strike? And when we're talking about developmentally appropriate practice, we're talking about things like how the child is developing across all their different domains, so in their fine motor skills, gross motor skills, language skills, social-emotional skills, self-regulation, all of those developmental domains. We're not necessarily talking about ABC 123. That's more the academic side of things. And so, you know, there's lots of research, probably on both sides of the debate, to say that your kindergarten should be developmentally appropriate with play-based learning and lots of developmental-type activities available to students, and then research to say that, okay, well, actually, if we load them up with academic, early academics in kindergarten, they're going to be better off several years down the road. And so in this sort of age of accountability where we're having to respond to the Massachusetts State standards and all of that, we have definitely, there's definitely been a push to move academic curriculum down into kindergarten. So we are responsible to the curriculum frameworks, and we are responsible for trying to provide a foundation of early literacy and early numeracy skills to our students, but at the same time, try to meet their developmental needs. And so it is a constant ebb and flow. And so it may feel like our school improvement plan is more academically driven. That's not to say that there isn't developmental learning going on constantly in both settings. And when I was honest and sort of reflected about the tool schools, I think we're probably a little bit more developmentally driven in the preschool, a little more academically driven in the kindergarten, and again, it's that function of the expectations of our sort of climate and education. The other, one of the other topics I was asked to comment on was our outdoor spaces, because we had a school improvement goal, actually for the past few years, around our outdoor spaces, and we opted as a school council not to have one this year. We talked about it, but opted not to. But just to kind of update, we do have a playground coming to the Little Mustangs Preschool Academy. It's actually being delivered tomorrow, but we won't be able to install until the spring, just because we've gotten too close to that, you know, winter months where it would be hard to coordinate all of the necessary pieces to get that installed. We identified a different location on the Savage property. It was going to be in the back, but we are actually going to put it next to the basketball, pickleball courts, because it's more, it's an easier, an easier accessible, that's not the right word, easily accessible location for our students. It was a little hard to get them up and downstairs to get out the back. So that's going well. We also want to try to add some sensory-type boards and activities to our Willet outdoor classroom, and we hope to install those in the spring. And also, we'll be working with the PTO about the possibility of providing some additional fencing around the outdoor classroom at the Willet. So they are all things that are sort of in the, in the works, and that we're just continue to follow up with our, with our totally awesome PTO. I was asked to speak a little bit about common planning time at the Willet. Most, or many of my colleagues may have a school improvement goal around common planning time. We do not, and that's partially because we do not have the same special structure that would allow us to create that common planning time at the Willet. They were able to create a special schedule this year for the 1 through 5 schools that would allow for all three, say, 5th grade teachers to be, be able to meet together, because they had a special at that time. Our special schedule is a little bit catch-as-catch-can, because we sort of get the leftovers of the special schedules, which is okay, but it just makes a very disjointed schedule for us, so there's no way I could possibly line up the specials to make that work. We do have the option of potentially utilizing aids to cover some release time for teachers to do some, some common planning time. It's less than ideal, because, you know, we, we are pretty much saying that we need two adults in a room for kids at all times in kindergarten for a reason. And, and it's not that we don't, at times, have only one adult in the room, it's just I don't know if I would want to do that on a regular basis that would get us enough of that common planning time to make it work. But there are some other ways, and we will continue, and we certainly collaborate at different times during our staff meetings, professional development days and things like that, and we may be trying to find some creative solutions, but as of right now, our hands are tied a little bit just because of our schedule. And then the last thing was an update on art. So we have had art every other week this year, which is a great addition to our school. We have three different art teachers, which is just one of the, again, the function of that. We get sort of the leftover FTEs from, from other teachers in the district, but they're all great. The teachers seem to be pleased. I will admit, I don't get to see it as much as I'd like to, because it tends to be mostly on Wednesdays, and that's an LMPA day for me, but all signs point to it being a nice addition to our, our school. And we would love to see it every week at some point if we can. All right, so let me dig into the goals a little bit. So we have four goals. The main areas are English Language Arts, Social Emotional Learning. We have a outreach to diverse families goal, and our culturally diverse families goal, and we have a goal around technology. So our first goal is, does it make sense for me to just kind of read at least the goal statement, even if I don't read all the action steps or...
Yeah, I think if you just do the goal statement.
Goal statement, okay.
Because we have everything else.
I don't want to read everything, that would just be crazy, but... So the first goal is, "The Willet and LMPA, to the extent applicable, will define and refine its curriculum and practices in English Language Arts. By the end of the 2019-2020 school year, there will be a consistent ELA program in kindergarten and possibly pre-K with educators ready to implement in the 2020-21 school year." So we are part of the district-wide K-5 pilot for the English Language Arts program. We have six teachers at the Willet who are piloting two on each program, and we are excited to find out what the ultimate decision will be, and we will continue to, we will provide, the district will be providing professional development to teachers in the spring in order to be able to launch in the fall. I do apologize for the slightly wishy-washy language of possibly pre-K. That is really dependent on which program we choose. One of the three programs does have a preschool component that we could look into possibly considering, but the other two do not. So depending on what we choose, we may push it down to pre-K, or we may not. But we also, part of that goal is also to continue our implementation of foundations, which is happening both at kindergarten and in preschool, going really well in kindergarten, going well actually in both places. Kindergarten, we noticed at the end of the year that the kids just were so like on the ball when it came to their phonemic awareness, and we've gotten some positive feedback from first-grade teachers around that as well, that the letter knowledge and the, you know, blending and segmenting was, we really saw a good boost in that. So that's pretty exciting, and they're pretty, they've become pretty good at it. It's a very routine-driven program, which is great for kindergarten. It's like, you know, you kind of do these routines where you're chanting and all these great things, so. The Social Emotional Learning goal, so we are very fortunate that we benefited from the override, and we were able to get a, a school adjustment counselor who is now working in our school three days a week. We used to have two days a week with two different people last year. And so now that we have a consistent person, we're trying to sort of define what we want our sort of counseling support to look like at the Willet. We don't have the largest caseload in terms of one-to-one counseling, but we really see this as an opportunity to do some preventative work for kids and starting to really like front-load them with the skills that we don't necessarily see them always coming to school with. So right now, I've been working with our new school adjustment counselor to sort of refine some of our processes around counseling, so we've been talking about, she created some new referral forums. We are in continuous dialogue about eligibility, and how do we determine when to pick a kid up, when to push in, when to offer strategies to teachers. So that's a piece of that. And then the other piece of that is just, we have kind of a lot of, a lot of different things happening with SCL, and so I think we would like to try, or I would definitely like to try to find a, a way to bring it all together and make it cohesive. So for example, we have Open Circle, which is getting a refresh right now. We have our school adjustment counselor who's doing some push-in lessons from kind of a slightly different perspective, not different... Not different perspective, but just more concrete around the Michelle Garcia winner, expected, unexpected behaviors and that kind of stuff. And then we also have our monthly all-school meetings, which have an SCL theme. And so we would like to kind of, I would like to see it kind of come together to say that things within Open Circle are sort of lining up with our themes are lining up. So we just have some work to do around that. And so that's part of what this goal really is. It's about taking the time this year to do that work so that, you know, come next year, we will feel a little bit more cohesive and put together in that, that realm. Next we have, the next goal is the Willet LMPA School Council will identify and implement strategies for engaging with families from diverse cultural backgrounds. Efforts will be focused on learning about immigrant families and their hopes and dreams for their child's education in the Norwood Public Schools. You know, I, I, I feel certainly, and many of the staff feel, that it's so important to be reaching out to not just our families who are from Norwood and have lived in the United States their whole lives, but also reach out specifically to families who have come from a different country and who may be navigating the American public schools for the first time and they're doing so in Norwood. We did have this as a goal last year. And what started out as an ambitious goal of trying to figure out a way to develop like a system of support, we kind of realized that was a little bit above and beyond the scope of the school council with everything that was going on. And we had the override and the whole, you know, all the craziness. So what we ended up doing last year is we sort of tweaked it into creating a family cultural night. And it was really, really wonderful. So we had it in May last year. We had probably about 20 families who came and participated and it was pretty much like a cultural fair. It's kind of a science fair's model, but just presenting family cultures. And it was beautiful. It was breathtaking. Food was amazing. We had performances. My grandfather went up and played the concertina. It was very, very sweet. And so what we were thinking to do this year is, well, that's a nice way to kind of learn about culture. I'm, I'm really interested in hearing from families about what their experiences are and what they really hope and dreams. So we're hoping to do a second parent night this year. So we're going to do a second annual family culture fair because that was so, so, so awesome. But we're also going to do a night where we invite parents to come in and talk with us, talk with the school council, talk with me, talk with any staff who are able to attend, just about what their, what's going on for them is in terms of their children's education. So we will be working on that in our next couple of school council meetings. We did draft a sort of timeline for that. We're hoping to do that parent evening in late January and then do the family cultural fair in late March this year. We did it in May last year, kind of started to conflict with some of those spring sports and stuff, so we wanted to move it a little bit earlier. So excited to do that work. And then finally we have, the Willet will take an inventory of existing technology devices and software. It will then develop a proposal for purchasing additional technology tools to support instructional practices focused on blended and personalized learning. So some of the questions I received about this, again, speaks to some of these balance issues in, in early childhood. So there's new, even recent, very recent emerging research to suggest that we have to be very careful about screen time with, with preschoolers and kindergarteners. There was a recent study that just was, got a lot of media attention just last week, as a matter of fact, about, they, they looked at the brains of 40, of 47 preschoolers, those who receive, who, who had more screen time than was what were recommended by the Pediatric Association versus kind of limiting it. And there's definitely, there's changes in the brain that occur. So we want to be very mindful of that in our preschool and kindergarten. But at the same time, we also have to recognize that these children are digital natives and there are some real strong benefits to bringing technology tools even into the early childhood classroom. We generally have less access to technology at the Little Mustangs and the Willet than say one through five and certainly less than at the secondary schools. I'm okay with that before that screen time balance issue. But we would like to just kind of inventory what we have, figure out if there are any tools that would be beneficial for us to be bringing, not only to the kids, but also to teachers for their instruction. And then developing a, a proposal to potentially purchase some additional devices. We currently have smart boards in every kindergarten classroom. There are not smart boards in the preschool classrooms. We, every classroom in both buildings has about four iPads available for student use. So we would like to, if you consider in our true personalized and blended learning model of rotating kids through stations, if you're doing, let's say, three stations, you might have seven to eight kids at a station. So you would need seven to eight iPads to be able to do that. So preliminarily, I'm thinking of a proposal to, to increase to eight in a classroom. But again, needs a lot of talking and discussion and figuring, so. So that is a lot of talking from Mrs. Robbins. So I'm happy to take any questions or feedback at this time.
Sounds fantastic.
Thank you.
My reaction was just to the, the percentages of students whose, you know, primary language at home is not English. And that has been a significant increase in the last few years. Am I correct in that?
Yeah. Um, you know, it's, it all kind of depends on what number you're looking at. I mean, you can see the increase in the students who are eligible for services. Well, actually I could tell you, I think at the beginning of the year last year, we, we tested about 100, 100 students for English proficiency. So what that tells you is that that's, there were 100 people who listed a language other than English on their home language survey. And so now you're looking at 124.
Wow.
Right? So that's a pretty significant increase.
And I think even 100 was a significant increase over what we were seeing maybe 10 years ago at the Willet.
Sure. Yeah. Yep. Absol-, oh, absolutely. I don't have those numbers going that far back.
Yeah, no, I'm just thinking like, I can't imagine if my kids were there. I know the number wasn't that high.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Just quickly, I want to thank you for talking about the developmentally appropriate practice and play. And my questions were not designed to be critical.
Of course.
And just always mindful, I think in today's society, a lot of times we forget about the importance of play and, and developmentally appropriate practices. And I tend to ask those questions of principals at all levels because developmentally appropriate practice doesn't end in first grade. So I, I'm thankful that you addressed that.
Thank you.
Next up we have Mrs. Brown. So before I come up, because one of our school improvement plans was STEAM or STEM, but it's STEAM. This is Calbot. This is the first prototype. So as a way to welcome you to the school, Calbot and the kids.
Is that going to deliver your entire group?
No, actually I, I had Sarah Ryan, Catherine Lee and Sarah Cabral, and I thought they could do it. But I, I thought Bob was here to do the cameo. Well, thank you guys for coming. It is a true pleasure to have you at the Callahan School. It is with great pleasure that I share information pertaining to our previous school improvement plan as well as the upcoming plan. I want to take the, this opportunity to thank members of our school council as well as our staff and students in working toward meeting the goals of each plan. During the previous year, we worked on four priority areas. To meet the needs of all learners, we used a variety of instructional practice. And the MCAS data showed that as a school, we exceeded state expectations set for our school in both math and ELA for all students, EL students, economically disadvantaged and students with disabilities. So that was a huge, huge growth for us. And we really believe that this is due to strong tier one, two and three intervention, including EL, Title I, reading, special education and the high quality of instruction that happens in our classroom. We measured this goal one way and I'm excited that we'll have Renaissance 360, but from MCAS. And in ELA, meeting and exceeding expectations is as follows. In grade three, we went from 59% to 64%, 8% above the state average. In grade four, we went from 61% to 64%, which is 12% above the state average. And in grade five, we went from 37% to 62% meeting or exceeding expectations, 10% above the state average. This was a dramatic improvement from the previous year where we were 17% below the state average. And I can explain later if you, if you'd like more details. But in math, the following was noted. We did have a slight decrease in grade three from 59 to 55%, but this was still 6% above the state average. In grade four, we went from 52% meeting or exceeding to 68%, which is 19% above the state average. And in grade five, we went from 50 to 55%, which is 6% above the state average. Grade five science continues to be the strength of the Callahan School. We went from 64% to 79% of our students meeting and exceeding is 31% above the state average. Mr. Downs, if you've ever been in Mr. Downs's science class, it is raps and songs and hands-on. And the magic that he spills with science is amazing as well as our, our science specialists. But I really do think it's a testament to how science is so hands-on, project-based, and, and we're seeing the results here. Our English language learners went from 68% demonstrating progress on access testing to 93%. So showing that that program truly does work. Our next priority area was in developing our professional learning community. We met continually to review student data, which I think is one of the reasons why we had some of the increase. And we use that data to drive our instruction. We increased our communication to families pertaining to all aspects. And we increased our, having them come in to do learning celebrations, to view student work as well as volunteering. In the area of safety, we reviewed our procedures and modified this to include visitor badges and designating areas out in play for different grades at recess. And as you know, we conducted a number of safety drills and met with the law enforcement personnel to make sure that our procedures were meeting the needs of our students. In terms of social emotional learning, it's kind of one of my babies too. We implemented a positive behavioral incentive system to address expectations in our hallway, at recess and a cafeteria, which are some of our more challenging places. And a lot of our PD days, when it was Callahan-based, really included the social emotional programs. We rolled out collaborative problem-solving, zones of regulation, flexible thinking, as well as growth mindset. And we engaged in a number of community leadership projects, projects and developed a student council last year. And our last goal was blended learning. And we saw an increased use of technology as well as several project-based learning initiatives. And I hope you will take the time during your break to look at some of the things that the kids have done with Mr. Ruland in here. We have a Makerspace, which was donated by our fifth grade class last year. We have a Lego wall. We read, we make Cal kids. So they're really enjoying all of those kinds of things. And I really think it's, it's just made coming into the library just such a special place. Our current improvement plan, when we first wrote it, was really a two-year and then our directive was one year. So we didn't want to water it down, so it is an extension. So when you see continue, because some of the initiatives we took on, we were really rigorous. And, and to achieve them in one year, we didn't get to the level that we wanted to. So our first goal is to continue to provide research-based instruction. And we'll accomplish this through differentiated instruction, station rotations, peer collaboration, project-based learning experience, small group instruction, foundations and our ELA pilot. And we will continue to review student, student data. And this year we'll be able to include the Renaissance 360, which will give us, not looking back the previous year, but current. So I'm really excited. And I know the staff has been working at faculty meetings, looking at Renaissance, how they can do different reports. Our next goal is to strengthen, continue to strengthen our professional learning community. And we're now doing bi-weekly common planning time. And I can tell you that the staff has utilized that. I think sometimes they even do more than bi-weekly. And they're pulling in the different specialists. They're, they're going to different schools to talk to different other people. So it's really been a great opportunity. We, we want to continue to have teachers observe their colleagues and to use that not as a supervisory, but just as a way to see what other classes are doing because when they get in the classroom, they don't always get to go out and see. And then I've talked to a lot of our families, don't use our website. So they've asked that our modality of communication be through our Blackboard Connect. So we're going to be doing bi-monthly kind of newsletters because they get those and they read them. So they, you know, so, and that was great feedback from our PTA last, most recently. We're going to continue to provide opportunities to visit and volunteer. We're going to be doing a lot more project-based learning and having parents come in. Last year we had an incredible kids' day where kids shared something special about a classmate. Families came in. We had, we did readers theater. So more, more time for parents to come in and, and really see what their kids are doing. And we are going to be doing more cultural awareness where the PTA is working on a cultural awareness night. And we also want to do more school and family enrichment activities. Public speaking is not my thing. It's Bob Griffin. We are going to, again, the safe and, you know, physical and emotional development is, is huge. The drills, I hope you were able to see our sensory path if you need to get your movement on. That is probably the one good thing about having a hallway around the gym. And what we did was the, the grade levels designed their path. So they came up with maps. I, I purchased all of the materials. They knew what the materials were. And then they designed how they want it to look for their grade level. And then they worked with me to put it out. It's really gotten so much use. You'll see the painter's tape is kind of wearing off. And our, our challenge is with the wood floors, it's going to be stripped at the end of the year. So, but that's good news for the kids because they're like, great, we could do another one next year. So, but they're loving it. You do not see children walking down the hall anymore. You see them, you know, on the different things. We've made, you know, we have an alphabet one. We have the fourth grade wanted to do, you know, even numbers, you know. So it, it just, it was really fun to watch them. And then our fifth graders took some of the, just, they were blank, yellow. And they said, we want to do inspirational quotes. So you'll see some of that in there. So they really took it and they, they, I think are really enjoying it. I have seen some of the teachers doing it too, so I know. They're doing their exercise. We will continue. One of the most exciting things I think we've done this year is we had a group of educators over the summer. Alec always offers up for teachers to work collaboratively. And they, it was my adjustment counselor, the school psychologist, special ed teachers, I think Mrs. Cabral was part of it, regular ed teachers, worked on creating an RTI in-class model for grades one and two. So they used essential questions. They came up with the vocabulary. They researched the, every month we have a different theme. And they came up with lesson plans to that we can go into the classroom and do. One, the first time they meet in the month, it's rolled out by my adjustment counselors. So the fact that we have two now, one is for first grade, one is for second grade. They go in and they do the whole grade together. And then they go, and they go into each classroom once, one other time per month. And then the teachers are doing the additional times. And those, they're going to be using their common planning times. We've gotten like two and a half months worth under our belt. We didn't have enough time to do the whole year. But they've pulled in literature. They've pulled in different activities. And I think it's really been positive, not just for our children who need the counseling or what we're finding that all children have social emotional issues. So now everyone has a common language and they're working on expected and unexpected. They started with school readiness. So it's been a real, real positive. And I think that's one of the things we're most excited about. We will continue until the SCL task force tells us differently. To use zones of regulation, which if you don't know zones of regulation, we started it in our task program. And if you're in the green zone, you're good to go. You're ready to learn. Red zone, you're just, you've lost all kind of rationale. You're just really angry. And then blue and yellow, you're either sad, you're frustrated, you're tired. And you'll see in some of the classrooms, when you go into first grade, they've got the zones and the kids click where they are. And there's no right or wrong zone. It's just what do you need to do? So they're coming up with strategies, how to get to the green zone because if you're not ready to learn, you're not learning. We, we do super flex, which if you look at the hallway by our, some of our rooms, you'll see, you know, rock brain. You know, you're stuck in the moment. So kids learn how to defeat these characters and strategies that they can use. That is also super flex. And we're doing growth mindset. If you go down one hallway, one of my paraprofessionals did a superhero growth mindset wall for me over the summer and she put it up. And she has little, like when you go to the stores and you take, you know, if you want to buy something from, you know, the, the local gardener. And so she has different like positive mindset and the kids are constantly like, there's no more tags. Can you put some more out there? And we will continue leadership opportunities and conducting a variety of community service projects. One of the things we're going to try to start is Cal Clubs. And during recess, not all the kids want to go out, so we're going to try to do a Lego club. We're going to try to do- to do a computer club, we're going to try to do a dance team, and a yoga. So the kids have asked for different clubs, and we're going to try to put that together a couple of times a week. Our last goal is student engagement and skill retention. And this is something that Dr. Thompson last year had us read as an administrative team, the Reader's Book, and one of the things that they talked about was framing learning. So we're looking at exploring mastery objectives, agendas, summarizes, activators. We rolled it out last year. Our recent staff meeting just went through some of that. And then we're going to be sharing out with our colleagues what's working, what's not working, and just so that we have a repertoire for students to frame that learning. And that is our plan. I know I also sent you a four-page, yeah, thanks Teresa. I didn't just have three questions, I had ten.
Can you stop calling me out now, please? You're going to make them all really nervous.
No, it was fun, but I don't, I don't know if you have any specific questions regarding that or any of our...
Yeah, I just had asked some questions, because, you know, as most of you know, my daughter grew up in this, in this school from first to fifth grade, so I, I know the challenges of this school pretty well, and also the amazing staff, and it's so nice to see so many of you in the room. But I had just asked her a little bit about like the Title I funding, the task program, the space issues, because they are things that need to be on our radar, and we have it in front of us, so you don't have to go through it. But there's three things that I would like to just quickly pull out for everyone's attention. The first, I'll title one, which Balch is Title I, is Oldham?
Not anymore.
Not anymore, okay.
Cleveland is.
Cleveland is now, okay, so there's been some shifting, and the Willett, but not the middle of the high school, right? Okay, so Willett, Callahan, Balch, Cleveland. So with Title I, I just think it's really important to understand that that funding source, you know, as Anna put here, is to be supplemental, it's not to replace. So you can't use that fellow money instead of other funding that we have, it's just to add on for the additional intervention services that the students need, so bring sport, keep out of mine. But I wanted to also just talk a little bit about the space in this building. And Dr. Thompson last week sent us the projected numbers for next year and the projections of the kindergartners to first grade, and if you look at that information, you have about fifty kindergartners.
We're at that cusp, I know.
So that's, you know, really too many for our first-grade class, but then if we add a first-grade class, and if you look at the numbers, there's a bump of meeting three going forward, and I don't know where you put them, and I know you've already had to take away from some task space and other rooms.
Which, one of my task teachers is here, and our, we had a rough start this year. And we really worked hard to expand our space, and I think some of the progress we made with our students is we did have a lot of space, and now we're back to one space. So when you have students dysregulated, the other students, their learning space is compromised. If you come downstairs to the basement, we have a ramp, and my adjustment counselor is working in a ramped hallway. My other adjustment counselor, we just moved the copying machine out into the hallway because she was working in a copying room. So, and we, our team meetings, which are, to be confidential, are held in our cafeteria, and that's where students go in and out of art and music. So years ago, there were two sections at every grade level, and I think when I first got here, there were open classrooms. I have five special ed teachers sharing one small classroom, which is only six hundred and sixty square feet. We don't have the eleven hundred square feet that some of the other buildings have. So it is, it, this, yeah, where, you know, we have, you know, our orchestra now is down in the CAF, band is sometimes teaching when you might have a gym class, because we've expanded, which is great with our, you know, our block schedules. But the Callahan really is, yeah, spaces, and I almost thought of giving up my office this year and sharing with the secretary. I, you know, just have space for people to work in. Our, for years, testing that's done in the Callahan is done in the teacher's room, and they put a note, and so teachers, you know, are, some of our, they don't do it during lunchtime, but some of our aides eat on off lunchtimes because they have to supervise, so they have to find places to eat lunch. So it really is something that, you know, when we look at where, I think it was two hundred and six students when I first started here, I think we're at two twenty-three. So we really are growing, and just the need of the space issues is just very, very challenging. And people make it work. My adjustment counselor, like, she opted for that, like, she said, I will, we know we, we, first, we tried to use a space in our task room, and it was just too much. She couldn't do, you know, private counseling, so she suggested that space, and she's made it beautiful, she's put up a lot of things, and, but it's still, yeah, if you go down, it's not optimal by any means. That's the, that's the reality of, unfortunately, our space. And you'll see in the hallway, tables, kids work in the hallway all the time, because if they're doing small groups, our classes are so small, they can't spread out and go on the floor. So, you know, Sarah Ryan is here, when she does, you know, she's in the ELA pilot, and she's got a small group in her room, and she's got other kids, like, you'll see them, and they just sit on beanbags, they just pull up and they're laying on the, you know, and we just step over them as we're coming to the library, and it's just, I mean, that's how kids just do it. I love when kids are working out in front of my office, I'm always out there with them. So it's kind of fun for me, but those aren't the most optimal spaces to have. But that, we make, we make use of every inch of this building. Thank you.
Mr. Eyle, it's your turn today.
I did not bring a robot. I apologize. If I had known.
Did you bring your blue rabbit?
Yeah, I did, I didn't either. Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Thompson, members of the committee. Thanks for inviting me tonight to provide an update on the Prescott School's 2018-2019 School Improvement Plan goals and share with you some of our goals for the twenty-nineteen- twenty-two school year. I'll start tonight with sharing some key highlights of the last year as it relates to the School Improvement Plan. Priority, priority, priority area number one was around social-emotional learning and cultivating school-wide expectations and shared community values in this area. I shared with the committee in my progress update a number of themes that were established and sample texts that helped to support our learning. I continue to believe that in addition to weaving SCL topics into core subjects, students need explicit and routine instruction in developing SCL strategies. We will continue to set school-wide goals in this area and look forward to the additional open circle trainings that are forthcoming. Priority area number two was around professional learning experiences for teachers and staff in our building. Last year, for the first time, all classroom teachers participated in ninety-minute instructional rounds. Grade-level teams and I discussed goals for our rounds, observed amazing teaching throughout the building, and debriefed with each other about immediate takeaways. The feedback from both observed and observing teachers through this process was fantastic. It planted seeds that led to further conversations around advancing our practice. Throughout the rounds, teachers routinely commented that while they had taught alongside many of their peers, they had never actually observed their teaching. The second piece of this goal was our leadership team book club. Last year, we, we had around thirteen staff volunteer to participate in biweekly book clubs. Our first book was called Making Thinking Visible, which discussed tangible ways to promote student conversation and collaboration around learning. Our second text was Smart But Scattered, around how to support the development of executive functioning in all of our students. Area number three focused on providing high-quality instruction to all students. This included advancing our extracurricular activities, rolling out our foundations program, and continuing to revive, to refine our inclusion model. And the final area from last year was around student achievement growth on the forecast. You'll hear in this year's plans what our goals are to continue to support all students, including the development of a response to intervention and student support team. In collaboration with our school council and staff, our community has established four clear goals for this year that align with our specific school needs and the five-year strategic plan. And you'll see in my plan, I tried to link it to the strategic initiative that we're working on. I want to preface our conversation around this year's goals with the fact that these represent some, but not all of the goals that we have as a school for this year. Area number one is common planning time, tied to Strategic Initiatives 3.1 from the plan. This year, we've established at least two thirty-minute common planning times for each grade level each week. These teams include not only classroom teachers, but our inclusion specialists, EL teachers, reading specialists, and oftentimes district curriculum coordinators like Stephanie West and Jill Milton. We've already established the framework, schedule, and collaborative planning documents for this year, and I'll continue to solicit feedback from staff and share our success stories. Area number two is new and innovative instruction, tied to Strategic Initiative 3.4, and this is somewhat of a catch-all goal, that's meant to identify the key programs this year that our teachers will focus on. For example, three of our grade levels are currently participating in the ELA pilot program, and our first and second grade teams are receiving high-quality professional learning from Wilson Reading Program in Foundations. Additionally, our third through fifth grade teachers are becoming familiar with the Renaissance Personalized Learning Program, and both implementing it with fidelity and analyzing the collected data. Area number three relates to the establishment of a response to intervention and data team. This year, we've created a multidisciplinary team to support teachers with their struggling students. Teachers are able to refer a student to the team and collaborate on how to provide the student with exactly what they need. Additionally, the team will work to proactively analyze student data such as Renaissance benchmarks, math fluency data, and DRA scores to align resources with student needs. Through our new elementary schedule, the time for this work has been established, and we are already meeting on a regular basis around supporting our students. Finally, area number four lays out our goal for continuing to advance our environmental awareness or environmental literacy program at the Prescott. This past year, with the support of our community, we've established three garden beds with the goal, with the goal of purchasing at least three more this year. In addition to producing summer squash, around seventy-five tomatoes, red and green peppers, one lonely pumpkin, and eleven cucumbers, each of our first graders this past year planted a sunflower that, it was magical, it actually bloomed the first week of school, so they came back to see their sunflower blooming. Additionally, we've partnered, we've partnered with Chartwells and the Norwood DPW to utilize the two compost bins on-site to compost items from the back of the house in the cafeteria just at the Prescott School, and conducting two cooking demos with items from the garden. This year, we'll establish a student green team to examine further ways to reduce our impact on the environment, including how to save electricity and promote our Waste-Free Wednesdays during the spring. As mentioned at the outset, these goals represent just some of the goals that we have as a Prescott community, and I want to close with a sincere thanks to our entire team at the Prescott for their hard work each and every day with our kids. As a school leader, I'm fortunate to have a fantastic team of educators who are united around what's doing, doing what is best. This plan, coupled with our strategic plan, provide a roadmap for our future successes, and I look forward to walk, to working alongside of you all to meet our goals. I thank the committee and would welcome any questions.
Could you share briefly, you had mentioned to me in a conversation about looping?
Yep.
Can you tell us what you're doing with that with some of the teachers?
Yes, so this past year, our two, our two fourth-grade teachers from last year looped with their classes up to fifth grade this year. Fantastic opportunity, the conversation started with asking those two teachers if they were willing to do it. I think the last thing an administrator wants to do is say, hey, these kids, you didn't really mesh with them, but have had it here, too. Both of the teachers, Ms. King and Ms. Healy, said, you know, we would love to do that. So they now, those students have the same teacher for the second year in a row, and it really, they hit the ground running. It takes out some of the get-to-know-you, the data, the partnerships with families. We just had the first round of conferences, and conversations have sort of moved from preferences of kids, to tell them about your kid, to, hey, here's all this growth that I've seen from last year, here are some things that they're, they're being challenged with. And the structure of that is that they switch for science and social studies. That's been a long practice in fifth grade, and most years at the Prescott, and that continued with both, both Ms. Healy and Ms. King. So I think, I'm very much in the mindset of having conversations with educators about things they want to do and risks they might want to take, and that was one, I think, last year, at the, the end of my first year, I think both of them were up for the challenge and agreed to do it. So I'm hoping to continue those conversations with all staff about sort of where they see themselves and what I can do as a school leader to support their own learning and growth.
Anecdotally, I had the same teacher in fourth or fifth grade, and I still talk to her today. She's probably the favorite teacher.
I would say if you really like the teacher, that's amazing.
Yeah, yes, yes. You know, I'm the oldest of four, my youngest brother had her, too, and he probably has a different relationship with her than I do, so I see what you mean. You didn't really go into the demographics, and I think it's just important for people to realize that your demographics at Prescott are changing, too.
Yep.
And if you look at like the ELL, you know, similar to what Mrs. Brown was just sharing with us, you know, in 2015, you were at eight point one percent, and then last year, you were at nineteen point three.
Yep.
So significant growth there.
Yes, and I think the, the number right above that is also significant, fifteen point eight of first language dot English, just four years ago, and we're up to thirty-seven percent. So I think we were, you know, one of the schools is probably an indicator for the sort of town of where we're moving, and the demographics have certainly changed.
Yeah, and your high needs population has grown by ten percent as well, from thirty-four to forty-four.
Yes, and I think that, you know, much like Principal Brown said, we're strapped for space, too. We're utilizing every inch of our building, including our new cottage, and so it's, it's, yeah, we're everywhere in the building.
Is the cottage up and running?
So it's up, it's powered. The furniture just made it in there today, and so we are hopefully going to occupy it in the next week. I think by Thanksgiving's ambitious, but very shortly thereafter. If anyone wants to come by and give, and tour, I can give an extensive tour, wear your walking shoes.
Thank you, Mr. Eyle.
Great, thank you.
Last School Improvement Plan is Mr. Griffin for the Oldham.
Madam Chair, members of the school committee, Dr. Thompson, Dr. Wyatt, Mrs. Dolner. I come to this evening to address the School Improvement Plan of the JP Oldham Elementary School, which is a little ironic, as I sit in the school that I entered as a twenty-one-year-old sixth-grade teacher in nineteen sixty-nine, and exited as its principal forty-eight years later in two thousand seventeen. I loved, I loved every one of those years here as a teacher and principal, kept in contact with the staff, parents, and kids here because of the hospitality Mrs. Brown always has showed me. And I was settling nicely into retirement when I began receiving calls and texts this past July from one David, Dr. David Thompson, asking how I felt about the possibility of coming back for one year as an interim principal at the Oldham. Of course, my first thought was, you got to be kidding me, right? And then I said to myself, am I too old for that responsibility? So my family left the decision completely up to me, with the caveat that anyone who enjoys spending two hours a day at the gym certainly has the energy for the challenge of taking over the school, so don't let that stop you. So here I am, four months into the school year, and loving the fact that I agreed to do it, and thankful to be re-energized by such a friendly and supportive staff, invested parents, and an excited group of eager young learners. The Oldham registered thirty new students last summer, which meant opening with two-hundred-and-fifty-two students, including an ELL population that now had six completely non-English speakers, thirty-one in total, and only a point five teacher to meet their needs. Thanks to the generosity of this administration and the good voters of the Town of Norwood, we were able to increase that position to a one-point-oh teacher with the hiring last week of Kathleen Golden. I investigated the 2018-2019 Action Plan of last year. I checked with the teachers and the appropriate stakeholders, and my findings on that plan of last year can be found on pages four and five of this year's plan under the progress report. Since the 2019 forecast results were released in a timely manner this year, I've had plenty of time to analyze the results in all three grades, investigate trends, and identify strengths and weaknesses. In the three months since classes began, I think it is also important to note that in my daily visits to every classroom, that I'm always extremely impressed with the patience, love, and the relationship-building that I observe in the classrooms of this school. The environment at the Oldham is happy and productive. The kindness and love that I observe here every day reminds me a great deal of the Callahan School. Our third graders' results were solid this year in both math and ELA, but there was some confusion for the kids because it was the first time they ever took the test on computer rather than pencil and paper. Their results were still impressive, however, in both tests, with scores that surpassed our district scores and scaled scores that were well above five hundred in all of our subgroups in math. in math, and nine out of our 10 subgroups in ELA. Our 2019 fourth-grade scores were exemplary, with over 70% of the students meeting or exceeding the standard in ELA and 80% doing the same in math. No fourth-grade subgroup received a scale score that was below 504.4. The fifth-grade scores came in below the other two grade levels. Even so, their average scale score was 499 for all students in ELA, 502 in math. It is, however, the fifth-grade science scores that alerted me that it was an area to prioritize for 2019-2020. Only 44% of last year's fifth graders met or exceeded the standards in science. This is 13% below our district, and it's even 4% below the state. These scores have fluctuated dramatically since 2016 and are in need of close monitoring. I've been conferring with science specialist Erica Lockwood, and we have determined the need to increase nonfictional writing in all five grade levels, as well as stressing the importance of maintaining the students' science journals throughout and after every single unit that is taught by Mrs. Lockwood, Mrs. Sullivan, and the classroom teachers. With first grade doing science drawing combined with some cohesive journal writing in grades two through five, we can bring these science and technology scores to the rightful level of prominence. We are also convinced that added to those great fourth-grade math scores in 2019, there is absolutely no reason to expect a 20% increase in meeting and exceeding the standards in our 2020 fifth-grade Oldham scores. If this goal is not achieved, I think that you should strongly reprimand the principal who's sitting there next year. Priorities two and three on the school improvement plan are district initiatives that have already begun with ELA coordinator Stephanie West taking the lead on the reading series piloting with the assistance of our reading specialists, our principals, and the participating pilot teachers. And the Renaissance computerized testing and intervention components have already completed their first round of assessments for grades three, four, and five in ELA and in math. Each elementary school has identified two teachers that will be trained as trainers within their own school. And with that, I would be happy to entertain any questions that you might have about the Oldham School Report.
Any more questions? I understand you got them the new playground?
I did. I did.
Thank you.
I did. I was known for years as the playground hater over here. And then Donna turns on the NCM TV one day, and there I am standing with my new playground, like I had something to do with it. It's great to be back. I am re-energized. I'm happy to be back.
It's clear when Dr. Thompson reached out to you.
Yeah. And I just want to put out, he's been very quiet in our administrative team meetings. He's saving it for the cameras.
It's, I forgot a lot of stuff, so I just keep my mouth shut. I listen a lot to Mike.
I don't believe that for a second.
Thank you.
Can I ask you one question? Is there anything at the Oldham other than what you identified here in the plan that you think really needs to be on our radar moving forward to focus on?
Well, Dr. Thompson asked us to take a look at our buildings and see what it would be like if there were movements in grade levels for kindergarten, grade five, et cetera.
Yeah.
The Oldham has a portable, actually, I always loved this room right here that was given to us from Irateon, believe it or not, for free. But the portable's up there, it has a computer lab, and it has a large classroom with a couple offices. And our advantage this year is that we had three fives last year, and we don't this year. So we have that room for our reading specialists and our ELL, so the kids have plenty of room up there right now. But I don't expect that to continue. And the numbers that Carolyn was talking about earlier and the other neighborhoods, I would expect, right now, we're two, right now, we're 33222. I wouldn't be a bit surprised if we went 33322, and then that three kept moving up. But, you know, I can't be sure of that, but I would guess that's the way it's going to go.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So we're going to move one thing on the agenda and bring our colleagues back for the Green Communities Program, since we do have to finalize that discussion and vote tonight.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome back.
Yeah, not too bad. A few ounces lighter.
Yeah.
So this is, I think, our fourth time meeting with you guys. As you know, we've edited the energy reduction plan once more to factor in for the comments received from Dr. Thompson, I believe, last Friday or Thursday it was. I think we feel like the plan has kind of addressed a lot of the comments that you, as the committee, have brought up, as well as just, you know, from the last time I met with you, it was a very rough draft, and it was something that it was, you know, it was hard to kind of really get a good picture of for that meeting. So I think we definitely showed up everything and tried to have all the appendices filled out and get it to where it needs to be to meet the standards. I just want to put that out to, any questions that anyone has, or any pre-existing questions or anything?
No, just thank you for giving the adjustments that we've been requested.
Absolutely.
So motion to approve the plan?
Okay.
So if any further discussion or concerns? Right, all in favor?
Right.
All right, we're here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the synopsis, truly very helpful.
On a completely different note, I'm intrigued with the maker space and creating that kind of learning environment. Here in Norwood, we have makers, and we have several industries, and I toured some of them, where for a suburban community like Norwood to have so many makers in town, it's amazing. I can put Dr. Thompson in touch with a couple of them, and I'm sure they'd welcome the kids in for a field trip to see how they make some things at Steel Art or Mystic Studios. We have a great opportunity to teach the kids hands-on stuff, and I'll forward some memes here.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Have a good night.
Dr. Thompson, report, late agenda?
Yes, I'll try to be particularly brief, since it is a full agenda. But I have made it back from DC successfully for the Blue Ribbon Schools Ceremony. It was a true honor to be there. I think it's important that the community realizes that less than 1% of all schools are recognized and given that honor. The keynotes were fantastic. Again, want to congratulate the Prescott for their work and the continued work, and it really was an honor to be there. One of the speakers likened it to the educational Emmys. So that was a really great thing. I also want to say congratulations to our fall sports athletes. Tonight is the fall sports recognition, and also congratulations to those students who are getting their jackets tonight. Unfortunately, we could not be there because it conflicted with this meeting, but I hope to see a lot of them in the spring, because we'd like to see multi-sport athletes. But again, we are seeing success, better production, more participation, you know, and obviously, the football program, we're very proud of the strides that they've made this year as well. Monday, hosted a community forum on the strategic plan on another cold rainy night, but we still had about 12 people show up. That was taped by NCM. So you can either go to your television sets to enjoy that over and over again, or avoid it, depending on your point of view. But that plan basically was, that meeting was basically an overview of the strategic plan and what our goals and direction are for the next five years. Some very good questions at that meeting, and one of which you have at your seat, which is a printed report, which we will be including on our website when we do the updates as well. Also hosted coffee with the super today, so we have one during the day and two evenings. The evenings are coming up, but had four people spend a good hour with me just informally chatting. It was an excellent opportunity to have some conversations with constituents. MSBA building update, so we had a conversation. So when we went in for the enrollment report, we, you know, shared, as we've shared from meeting, that part of the feasibility piece would be looking at, is it a 5 to 8 school or a 6 to 8 school? I think tonight, you've heard some of the space problems. I'll be honest with you, I wish I had that space now to alleviate some of our space problems elsewhere. But that is not a conversation we've had as a community, as a district, as a school committee, as a leadership team. But they were asking how we would reuse our space at the elementary level. So we did that. We gave them what they asked for, and then we met with them last week, and they wanted more. So we're currently working with that. We are still on track. We are still ahead of schedule. We're not supposed to have all of our deliverables in until January 27th, but we do like to be ahead of the game. And in this case, it's good to be ahead of the game, because when there's a zag or a question, we're still on track. I was secretly hoping that we would be going in December, but it looks more like we'll be going in front of the board in January. I want to remind the community that there is a free Thanksgiving dinner being given out. The schools have all sent home a blackboard notice asking for people to register. We do need people to register. We need to know how many dinners to serve, but that is at 5:30 next Monday, so please RSVP. And a reminder that next Wednesday, the Wednesday before the Thanksgiving holiday, is a half-day, so look for the dismissal announcement coming out early next week on that. And that's my report.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson.
You're welcome.
So next, we have a couple of budget transfers, and Mrs. Sheridan is up here tonight, so are you able to guide us through those?
I am going to, I am going to do my best. So the first one I have, you know, and all of these come under having to use some of the monies in some of these accounts for things, and now we're transferring to cover other things. But the first one is the bolch instructional supplies, moving textbooks to supplies, which is something we generally have to do on occasion. But we had an increase in enrollment in a sub-separate program, and that increased the need for some furniture and materials, so that's why the transfer of a total of $8,200 is being requested there. Can I just go through all three and do it as a consent agenda, unless there's a question?
Yeah.
Okay. The next one I have is the Callahan textbooks. And again, you know, they were looking, you know, one of the things that they've been working on, and I actually blame Dr. Frazek with their flexible seating, it's now moving around, so down lower. So the Callahan here, they have purchased tables, which is a more collaborative space to learn at, so looking to get large storage pockets, and that was an expense they had not really planned for next year, so that's where that $3,500 is being asked for to move that. The next is the Oldham textbook, and that, we had a teacher, basically, again, we had a staffing move at the Oldham, and we needed to order more paper, and we needed to add more equipment, which then took money out of the account we would use for paper and toner. So this is to replace that, that $4,000. Paper is expensive. And the last one, the high school, and, you know, we have to have, you know, we have our conference dues account, our NEASK invoice, and that was something that they did not budget completely for this year, thinking it was going to be in two payments, and found out that there was more money due this year, so that we were $1,000 short. So that's why we're asking for some money to come out of conferences and go into dues.
Motion approved.
I'll second. Okay, any other questions? Actually, I have a question, it's something that maybe we can talk about it in the future with Mrs. Sheridan and maybe with town hall, is, you know, looking at this one, the Oldham, and they're all similar, but, you know, this one in particular, we're going from Oldham Instructional Supplies and Textbooks account for textbooks to Oldham Instructional Supplies and Textbooks account for Instructional Supplies, which I feel like we, as a school committee, kind of allocate that all to textbooks and instructional supplies, and we trust the administrators to spend appropriately within that budget. And so when they're moving from one line item to another, I'm curious if that really requires a vote?
Well, that seems to be the habit in Norwood, but Mrs. Sheridan did ask why we would do all these little piddly transfers, and we haven't quite gotten down to the nuts and bolts as to who's requiring those. It could be a town accounting thing, it could just be a practice that we've had. But I agree, a lot of them could be just journaled and explained, and you spend it out of that account instead of this account. But I don't know if that's, you know, and, you know, and honestly, we're still straightening out accounts, and I think, but that is, it's on the to-do list.
We did also talk about it in the policy subcommittee, because there is actually a budget transfer policy.
Right.
That is severely outdated.
Another one for us to address.
It's on our list.
No, I mean, just a comment, I think that when things are extremely different, that might be something that comes up, but this is almost the same thing.
Yeah.
Right, well, yes, and normally, normally, if you're moving it...
Instructional Supplies and Instructional Supplies? Are you confused?
And...
They're really very similar. Maybe we added two new lines.
Right. And, you know, normally, if, you know, if you're going from one school to another school, then it's kind of, but if it's in the same, you know, destination code, you should be able to flex here and there. And I can tell you personally, I would spend 600 on this and 400 on that to get 1,000, and it all went, but I'm not, so there needs to be some investigation, which is a little lower in the priority list. Right now, it's getting the accounts straightened out.
Right, no, I did not mean to make it a priority, it's just a question I'm...
But it is on, it is on the radar. It is on the radar. Yeah.
So there is a motion on the ELL, right?
Yep. I'm second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Unanimous, okay, great. So we do have to sign these budget transfers, I'll sign it and then pass those around. So we are moving into some lengthier topics of the strategic plan report, Dr. Thompson's goals. Do you want to continue? Do you want to take a brief five-minute break before we move into those?
Motion for a five-minute break?
Second, all in favor?
Hi.
All right, unanimous, we will return in five minutes.
There you go.
Welcome back to the school committee meeting. Dr. Thompson, you are up next with your report on our strategic plan.
Yes, thank you. So I want to, in doing this, I mean, we're going to have a little, unfortunately, the screen size is a little small, a little compact, but I definitely wanted to show everybody the dashboard, because that's where the community will be able to go to see the update of the strategic plan. But I also, I'm going to borrow this, because...
Yeah, go ahead.
What did I do? I don't know what I did with my, oh, it's here, never mind. I also, this is where my notes are. But at your place is also a detailed report with the comments and the updates for each indicator, and this is also on the webpage. So, and this doesn't look the same as if you go on a regular computer, but if you go, and along the top, you have those boxes, this right here is those boxes, if you go under District. Okay, if you go down that, one of the options is Strategic Plan. So when you hit that, that brings you to this page, all right? At the top of this is a link that is the actual document that the school committee approved. Below that is a copy of this document, and the plan will be when we do the bi-monthly updates, there will be a new update up there for people, because it really is a nice, easy way to see it cross-section. And then below that is our dashboard. And just, we're using, we partnered with OnStrategy to do this. So what this enables us to do is to continually update our progress on the strategic plan, and it basically shows where we are. The one thing that we have learned as we've gone through this, and it's probably still a few bugs to fleece out, our language from the DESE is not necessarily the same language that OnStrategy would have used, so some of those crosswalks are not all connected. There's a couple, I think, that we still need to go back with, but we will do that eventually. So if you go, if you look here, you can see that, you know, 1.1, 1.2, so these are all under that first initiative, which is, you know, investment and resource allocation. under that first initiative, which is, you know, investment and resource allocation. All right? And then you can see who is the captain below that. So this one is me, I'm off talking. And Maev is over here as the, as the chair of the budget subcommittee. And you can see who are the people that are kind of responsible for these and our progress thus far. And I will remind the committee that when we developed our action plan, we tried to develop a plan that we could, we could use whether we were successful on June 4th or whether we were not successful on June 4th. So with that, and we, we were successful on June 4th and there was a lot of hiring and things that happened over the summer. So some of the timelines we probably need to fix, so it doesn't mean we can't catch up. The other thing that I will say as an introduction is if we're sitting here in the first few months and everything's green and 100%, then it probably wasn't a pretty ambitious plan. So, and this is an ambitious plan. It is a big plan and it is an, it is an ambitious plan. So just to go back, and I'll start with number one, and when you click on these boxes, which you can, in the public and you folks can do at home, you can see where we are. You can see the objective, commit to an open and transparent, as you hover over it, it kind of expands, transparent budget process that includes all stakeholders. And the outcome is develop budget communication plan based on the input from stakeholders, survey, information from research and best practices from neighboring districts. So that's what 1.1 is about. So when you go down below, you can see that 1.1 has got subparts to it. And each one of those subparts are right here and you can see exactly, if you kind of click over, you can see exactly where we are. Now, a lot of the budget ones, we're a little behind on. And part of that is starting, you know, the plan was set up to start in July or August and we actually didn't really come back to it in October. And the other piece is a lot of things we thought we would be able to do in early fall have just become available. So it's, it's a timeline problem. We're not really all that far off. So with that being said, so I'm gonna kind of go back to this because it'll be a little easier to follow along. So the first page is the plan page. The second page has got the vision statement, the mission statement, the core values. And then we get into the progress detail pages. And this is about 23 pages in total. So you can see, you know, you can see all of the progress and change benchmarks underneath 1.1. And, you know, and basically, you know, several of these are done, several of them may be only 10 or 25%, but it, we should be able to actualize that and get up to speed pretty quickly. So this, as I mentioned in my superintendent's report, you know, so, so the, under one, let me go back, I'm sorry. 1.1, a lot of it is about getting, finding out what best practices, and that's a combination of looking at training through MASBO and the, and the school committee association, reaching out to comparable districts and getting information from them on their contracts and their salaries and those sorts of things. So we have started that training. You can see under 1.1, 1.2, where we were, you know, attending budget pieces. I think that all three of us, Teresa, Maev and I, were deeply involved with various budget presentations at the MASC conference. And you'll see that is achieved. We have identified districts that we want to try to collaborate and learn from, and we're in the process of getting the information from them. So 1.2 is that community outreach on the plan and sharing it with the plan. And I shared during my superintendent's report that that first presentation was done Monday. It was recorded. And obviously, the dashboard has been put up and has those updates in it. And even if you go underneath on these and click on them, you have to go back up here, but you can see, why is it, it's not showing here? But you, you can see these comments are actually in here. Why are they not showing up? Let me go back here. It's supposed to be, on my computer, you can see the, the actual comments in here. That are the little italics that are on your report.
Was that supposed to be on the dashboard or is that just people who log in?
No, I think it's supposed to be on the dashboard. That, right here, see, right here it is.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So at 1.2, you can see the, the comments. So if you huddle over it, those same comments that are in the report, you can see. It only shows like the last one, so as we get deeper, I'm not quite sure you'll be able to see all of them. I'm not sure why it's not showing up on those over there.
Dave, forgive me, where did we get this great layout from?
It's a, it's a company called On Strategy. There's basically three or four. Not only do they do an electronic hosting piece to it, but they also actually will, you know, do, help facilitate the process.
I always wish this was in, you know, more predominance in the front of this because it's, you know, the fifth thing down on there. This is really more interactive, more interesting.
Yeah.
You know, definitely more engaging.
Right.
So I wish it was, somehow move it up front? I don't know how, but.
Up front.
Well, you could have it on our website, just so that people can.
Yeah, well, it, well, it comes, see, the main page is constantly changing and evolving with updated events and such, so it would quickly get lost. We had talked about putting a button on there at some point. But it is under district, under strategic plan, and it is right there. And right now it is on that front page, but in a week or so it will, it will fall off. So, and we'll keep putting it up there. But it is up there. It is, it's nice, it does show, and it is a nice visual for people to quickly go. And then if you want to go up and actually read the detail and every single thing, that, that's why the report is up there. And that's one of the feedback that I received on, on Monday night. So the next step, under 1.2, which is that outreach, is, is having strategic plan presentations done at PTO at the building level. And we expect, I expect that to happen over the next, next couple of months, depending on if they're having a PTO this month or December. But sometime now, between now and the end of January, the principals will be facilitating and continuing those conversations. And the whole idea is to make sure people understand, you know, the direction that the district has said it wants to move in. And that understanding is, is shared.
Are we capturing feedback from those?
We have not yet.
But could we? Like a very simple two or three question form and everybody?
Yeah, that is, that is one of the things on here. I figured I would try to get it out on video and let it happen so people, more people see it.
Yeah.
First, but, okay. So then, moving on to 1.3, which is aligning school and town resources. Most of this first-year plan, plan is around the munis system. So, you know, you can see the first one, you know, we have completed the training with people. There is some ongoing training and some retraining as case may be. A lot of that training happened in June. People used it. People went away for the summer. You know, and I have to say that we have gotten a lot of support from the town trying to solve the problems. And this is a big conversion. This is a big change. And, you know, the, you know, the difficulties or the, or the strange things that are happening, I mean, we're not the only ones experiencing it. You know, the town side is having some growing pains with it as well. And we knew that it was going to be difficult and, you know, but a lot of these are still to be worked out, including having the right accounts set up and things like that that Mrs. Sheridan is working on. Moving on to, oh, the other thing I wanted to mention under 1.3 is that we're currently working very hard and we're gonna have a meeting next week because the next piece is moving the payroll and human resource piece over to munis. That's gotta happen in January. So that's a competing piece for, for time and resources, which kind of has slowed down the payables part because we're not working on the HR part. And people have asked me, well, why do we have to do that? You have to start in a calendar year. That's how the taxes and everything works. If you don't, it, it, it would be a nightmare. So it, it's going to be a little bit of a growing pain, but it'll be worth it in the end. Also, if you look down, 1.4, that is showing up on this plan report, but it's not actually, you can see it's not started because it's not until next year. Okay? All right. So 1.6, evaluate the efficiency of Norwood contracts. And again, this is part of our preparation and looking at, at contracts as we go forth. So we've started that. We've done analysis of, of two of the contracts. We've asked comparable districts for their contracts and salary structures, and we are still waiting for some of those to come in. So, working over to facilities and operations, this is most of, if you look at that, you can see that that is 70. Let me go down here so we can go back to, to this.
Yeah, put that one up because there's a lot of green there.
Yeah. So, yes, you can see right here. So, so this is the, under facilities and operations, and you can see that this first one is 73%. And then if you get down, you can see a lot of these are 100%. And these are the, the eligibility process that we are ahead of schedule on. So that's why those are ahead of schedule. You can see 1.9, which is on the feasibility study. That hasn't started yet because we're hoping that in March we'll be, we'll be addressing that particular part of the plan, hoping. Okay? But this is one where we are definitely ahead of schedule on that. 2.3, which is infrastructure for technology. So we have looked at and reviewed the old technology plan. We have identified people we want to try to get involved with the new technology plan. That, you know, so technically we're on target, just barely, but that will probably pick up after, after the holidays. It would probably help if I stopped giving Mr. Kitt all sorts of other crazy things to do all the time. But we are making progress on that. 2.4, which is safety measures and procedures to promote safe learning environments. And, you know, so at that point, we, we are on target. We do have a school emergency operation plan draft that was worked on and complete, the draft was completed last year. And again, I, that was working with tech and some experts in the area. Tech brought in. And we had Donna Brown, Cindy Derain, Paul Murphy, our resource officer, John Greeley from the middle school, and Carrie, Carrie Quinn, who's one of the housemasters at the high school. And that was our team, looking at that, grabbing best practice and creating a draft. That has been reviewed by the police department. They have sent their suggestions back. We're still in that draft revision process because it involves the whole community and, you know, collaborating on that. But we are on target for that as well. Next steps are going to be, you know, getting that draft to a final stage, bringing it to the school committee to share with them, and then training staff on our procedures, trains and, and risk assessments and things along that line. So then moving through, that was 2.4. 2.5 is actually parlayed. That is not one of the ones we're looking at this year. So if we go to three, which is, oops. So here's 3.1. Where's 3.? Yeah, 3.1. You can see that yellow piece right there in the corner, and you can, you can see how it's red in your report. That indicates that it is a priority indicator and a priority in our strategic plan. So this is innovative instructions and personalized learning. So that's, that's why those are in red. And as you heard today, you know, we are on target for that, for our first year of that plan. Our instructional practices were identified in March of last year, and the principal's been working on those instructional practice based on the Rebus book, maximizing student So, you know, the other piece is that we have, you know, developed a professional development plan. That plan is being implemented at this point in time, and that was shared with you last spring. We have implemented the assessment and personalized learning tools, namely Renaissance. The training for that of all staff has already occurred and the train, the trainers, we have already had the first installment of that. I think the next one is week after, yeah, the week after, after Thanksgiving. The other one that we are ahead of is common planning time. That was actually in the plan for next year, but we were able to, to find a way to get that done this year. The curriculum, ELA curriculum pilot is in full, full force and on schedule. And the integration of technology for personalized learning has been going on. And the main piece of that was our work with the Fuse Fellows, and the second cohort has already started. And in fact, tomorrow, they are doing the visioning with the mirroring of students. Dr. Wyeth?
Yeah, shadow.
Fuse?
Yeah.
Shadowing of students tomorrow. So we are well on target for that innovative and personalized learning piece there as well. See if I missed any that I wanted to mention there. Common playing time, agendas and forums, you know, and again, they just got some common playing time. You heard it with the school improvement plans. Those pieces are, are starting to come together as well. 3.3 is about the professional learning system and professional learning time. And again, we're on target with that. So we did, you know, instigate instructional rounds. We do intend to at least do two more schools this year as well. And the plan is to get schools to start doing instructional rounds this year as well as a school-based look. Data teams, you know, you can see on 3.3 that, that one, we are behind on. A piece to that was the decision process around developing that assessment team, which is one of our main pieces of data. So that, we're a little delayed on that, not to be overly alarmed. 3.4, which is core instructional programming in each level to ensure equity in horizontal and vertical alignment. We're off-target on that. And part of that is, you know, we did have a little bit of a, you know, we had an ideal sort of vision of where we would be in the curriculum review, and that needed some adjustment. But I think we will, we will, we will, you know, meet that. There is one mistake on this report. 3.4, 1.3, explore curriculum options for elementary ELA. That's been done. I don't know why that got missed. So, you know, we're, we're on, we're on track for those piloting ELA pieces where, where we should be. And then you can see down below, we have SEL programming. We have identified Open Circle and have started to refresh the PD on that. We are in the process of identifying SEL curriculum at the high school and at the middle school. And the preschool has started with that as well. So I think we're up to date with that one. And if we keep, one thing I have to figure out is how to put page numbers on the bottom of this, just between you and I. So 3.5, which is leveraging technology. You know, and we're, we're on target, target for that. Obviously, we have purchased more Chromebooks again this year, refreshed. We are adding a Chromebook cart to, and again, that, those Chromebooks coming down, we are already adding a Chromebook cart to each elementary school. That will be done in the next few weeks. Right, Joe sent out a email this week asking where they wanted to base the Chromebook. He's really close. He's looking to deliver it. I talked about the Fuse Fellows. And that is a main piece to this as well, as well as that Renaissance intervention piece, where you're using the data to then prescribe what areas students need to work on to either get on pace, keep on pace, or exceed the pace. Dr. Wyeth, do you want to chime in on any of Area 3, seeing that a lot of them are under your purview or?
3.4.
Or any of those?
No, I think you've done, you've done.
So 3.6 is analyzing synthesized data to inform instruction for all students. And you can see that we're at 75% on that one. And again, green on target. And again, a lot of this has to do with our assessment system and our initial launch. You know, and, you know, you can see at the bottom of that, you can see a red critical. We have, we're still teaching the trainers how to do the reports and use that. So that's one that we're a little behind on, but not to be overly, not overly worried about that. 3.7, inclusive practices. We are off-target on that. Uh, we are off-target on that. All right, oops. Oh, darn. Let me show you how to get in there again, by the way. So as you, uh...
Yeah, it's actually pretty easy to get to from the district website. Um, you know, under District, it's located right there, Strategic Plan.
Right.
So if you click on it, it takes you right to the, like, to the dashboard.
Right. This is, because it's a compact screen. So the inclusive practices, which is three point seven, right here. We're obviously behind on that. We're off-target on that. Um, and basically, that comes down to two pieces. Um, and this has begun, but it's been slow in the, um, you know, in the, um, you know, in the startup because of some other pressing needs. But, you know, we have started meeting with principals to talk about programming and, uh, common strategy use. And, uh, we are looking at, you know, um, reading interventions and, and other pieces. But that is something that Lori is, is just starting on. And then the therapeutic, um, program piece, separate, and that actually is a, is a goal for year two, three. And then we get into, uh, programs and pathways. And you can see that we are on target there. Um, we all know about the healthcare pathway that was established. We have twenty-six students who've started in that. Uh, we've added two more partners since the initiation, um, Moderna and Harvard Medical School. Um, so the, these kids are going to be doing trips to Harvard Medical School to use their sim labs there. Pretty cool. Uh, we've started, um, exploring a second pathway, which is information communication. Um, looking at a partnership with NCM, but we also have TV studios and a lot of other people around here. Uh, the Fall Career Week has already happened. Uh, the exploratories at the middle school have already happened. You know, and our career planning, um, person that we hired, put into the high school with the override funds, has already started programming in, uh, with, with students as well as the Career Fair Week. So we are ahead of where we thought we would be with that, which is excellent work by, um, the high school staff. So the, the other piece that's, uh, in here is four point two, which is, uh, you know, aligning existing programs. And we're forty-five percent there, but we're, you know, on target from where we, uh, planned to be. So, so, you know, it's really started at the high school in earnest, and it's just started at the middle school, but we have not gone lower than that at this point. And that might need to be a, um, a goal that might need to be adjusted. I don't, I don't know if we have enough horses to, to really get, um, below the middle school. Um, but the other thing that comes under this that's really exciting is the Project Lead the Way, where we've, uh, started that first path, that first, um, first program, which is computer science for innovators and makers. Uh, and then we're hoping to add two others, uh, next year with those override funds, buy the materials, and then, I mean, part of it is, is the training. We couldn't start all three because we trained, we had people set up to train over the summer, but then we got, didn't have enough time to get them into the program this summer. So the plan is to set up those programs with the materials and then send people, uh, next summer for the training. So that each grade will start off with one of these Project Lead the Way programs, which is career-oriented, um, stem and steam-oriented, and really, hopefully, opening kids up to some of the careers that we kind of expect will be in high demand going forward. Four point three is, it is a, is a next year. So we, I mean, we've done a great job, um, identifying community partners. And, you know, we'd actually like to probably add in the Global, uh, Global Citizens piece as maybe a third pathway. I might be spoiling some of the thunder though, so I'll, I'll skip on that. So the, the last one's, and, and again, this is, um, identify and develop community partners from various pathways. Um, so you can see here, they've got healthcare, computer science, service industry, global studies, fine and performing arts, those are just ideas that were put down. So we'd like to get a network of, of community options. And, you know, and, you know, we need to build pathways that make sense and build those and be strategic in how we do that. But, you know, I, I would love to be at, at three or four general areas where kids... Because it's, it's not just about, oh, I'm going to do this. It's also about thinking about careers, building a skill set around exploring careers, uh, as well as putting together, um, skills that will be needed. Uh, the next one is, um, is around safe and supportive schools. Uh, so we're looking to identify programs and resources around that SEL work. Um, and I mentioned before that we have, um, Open Circle at the elementary level and preschool. Uh, the, Norwood High actually, um, has been, um... Trying to find it. Yeah, so, uh, you know, at the, at the middle school and high school, they're looking at three different programs. Character Strong, Choose to be Nice, and Second Step. And there's still the exploring of those programs. But the other piece that comes under here is this, this, the cultural responsible piece. Um, and the high school has, uh, embraced World, the World of Difference Program, which is, um, which is offered through, um...
ADL.
Yes, thank you. Um, yeah. Yeah, the Anti-Defamation League. Uh, and they have identified thirty students, and they have all gone to be trained. And we now have a cohort of, of trainers in, in the high school around World of Difference. So that, that program is going to be starting this year. And obviously, we know about our, under five, our SEL Task Force and developed that initial plan. And I think that was essentially it. So, and five point two, you can see that that's actually, we need to have a, we need to have kind of a deeper conversation with this. Um, that culturally responsive practices, a lot of, you know, the, the elementary schools have got the pilot. They've got Renaissance. I'm probably missing six other things. They have instructional practices. So there's a lot going on, and, and do we, and we're in the midst of, do we have enough courses? Is this one of the ones that we need to relook at our timeline? So we need to have more conversations kind of around that. And I think that is pretty much it. There's a lot more. I was trying to give you a summary, um, but if you look what I've done in this report and actually, um, yeah, so if you look in this report, you know, for those at home who want to go and look at the same report that you have, it's, it, you know, the comments that give kind of the details of where we are are that, Alex. Uh, for you folks and for me, I, I basically went through with a highlighter and highlighted all those to be easier to find. But you can see where, uh, kind of where we are with each of those progress benchmark and, um, those, those process benchmarks for each of the initiatives. So part of, part of the reason, Dave, to go back to, to go to this is that without that, I, I would need to have a cast of a thousand people here trying to, um, do updates. You know, I think, you know, as we move forward, this will be a little less cumbersome because it'll be the new information and not all the information. Um, but if you, and I don't expect people to have questions right now because you're just getting a chance to look at it. But if you do, we will, uh, we will get those answers for you.
What is the process for possibly adjusting some of the things that you identified?
Well, what, what we need to do as an administrative team is come back because five point two is, is really the only one. The other ones, the timelines might not be exactly what we thought they would be last March. But I'm pretty confident we can catch up. But that's one where I, I think it might be a difficult, another hill to climb. So we need to come back, um, at our next meeting and have a conversation, or maybe an elementary principal's meeting, have a conversation about, okay, out of all the things that in, that are in here, what's doable, what's not doable, what's the timeline would be, and then we'd come back and share that with you.
Yeah, I, I think that it makes sense to revisit this timeline. I mean, I think it was really important to set a timeline back in March.
Right, yeah.
But, you know, we know that we had to, we've seen an even bigger influx of English language learners. And we had to do hiring for that, and we've had to reconfigure schedules for that, and that absolutely had to be done.
Right.
And so, and, you know, there's other things like that, too. Like, when, when we were making this plan, there wasn't a plan that the Prescott was going to add the cottage and, and all the stuff that goes on with that. So there's just all these pieces that are in, you know, that are constantly moving in any school district. And so I think it's totally appropriate to stay, say, okay, let's take a step back, not say we're not going to do these things, but let's give ourselves a reasonable timeframe and set ourselves up for success.
Right.
Yeah, John.
So what, does it make sense to do that? I, I, we are, it sounds like we're all in agreement that we would need to adjust the timelines. I think it's prudent to discuss when we would like to see those adjusted timelines.
Right. Right, well, that's something that we could, you know, that's something that, you know, we'll pull the administrative team together and take a look at and have a discussion about. And then probably come back, for, probably, probably in January, I would think.
So I was going to say, jumping ahead a little bit, um, in terms of Dr. Thompson's goals, he, of course, had written a goal about the strategic plan, and I had suggested adding a line that we evaluate all year-one action plan status and update due dates by the end of January. So that was just sort of, kind of, a rough idea, maybe.
Yep, so I guess I'm asking to push the rough idea to a commitment? Do we put that on our long-term agenda?
Yeah.
Type of thing?
Yeah. I mean, this type of update is already on our agenda every other month. So, um, the long-term agenda, if you want to see it, is here, and will be on our agenda, our review with everybody as we move into 2020. Um, but this type of, um, update is every other month, but specifically, the adjustments, um, could be added, like, January twenty-second because we meet January eighth, and that's like right after the break. I don't know, because even at the meeting on the eleventh.
Right.
You don't meet again in December, do you?
I don't think so.
Yeah, I think you just have the one in December, and then not again.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of wonky because of where, um, Thanksgiving and the winter holidays are.
Yeah.
We basically are going a month without a meeting. It doesn't mean that we can't have a elementary principal's meeting to discuss.
There's a meeting December eleventh.
Right, but there isn't another meeting in December.
Another, oh, a second meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, but that'll be, I mean, they'll be, they'll have, don't worry, they'll get plenty of quality time if we start talking about budget. So, don't worry, it won't be long.
I have a couple other questions about the capability of the system. So, the comments are great. Do they, um, do they get erased? Is there a way to historically go back and see when deadlines, when targets were hit? And the kind of ongoing comments? I'm thinking about your, um, evaluation process at the end of the year, and that this seems like it could be a very nice public, like, way for us to go back there. It's, I'm asking more about capabilities of the system.
It's interesting because I looked at, and I don't know whether this is, it's how I set the, again, learning curve.
Yep.
But there was one report where the, when you went in, when I went into it, when I signed in and went into it and looked at the comments, it had dates in it. And maybe that's just a formatting thing. You know, I mean, the one, the one piece of this is, is that box is only so big. And I'm not sure it gets, but if you put the date in so that the newest comment is at the top, you'll see that. But I, you know, my, my intent was they were not going to be erasing the comments. It was going to be a running commentary.
Is there a limit to the number of logins we can have? Or do we pay for, bind login?
No, I don't, no, there isn't.
So, um, I think that it might make sense to give all the school committee members a login so they can really, because...
Yes.
If you can log into the real system, you can definitely see all of that. And I don't know that we necessarily need to keep all of that on the webpage dashboard for everybody to see.
Right, the capability is, it's a nice need.
Yeah, during the training for the software, as you remember, she said there were certain fields that would be just if you logged in, which is why I was asking when you couldn't find the comments, if that was part of that field. But I do remember there were, like, benchmarks and dates, and, um, I do not believe it goes away. You just continue, like, it's supposed to track your progress.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that that...
Yeah, I believe so.
Function was turned on and so that we're not at the end of the year going...
When did we do it?
Yeah, when we have this really nice app there.
How did we get here?
My other question is, is it possible for us to, um, update all of our social media accounts with the link to that's, so that it can go out to the public, to the public-facing one? Um, so they can see it relatively quickly?
Maybe a fixed link at the top of everything?
Yeah, just on the Twitter account and the Facebook account. I don't know who runs those, but if they could just put the link and say this is also...
Yeah, well, if you, if you put on the Twitter account, then it's just one tweet that goes out.
Great, yep.
Yeah.
Or maybe pin it.
Pin it.
Yeah.
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 Just try, I'm just trying to put a plug to make sure that we have this. It is really helpful.
Yeah.
And it provides great transparency, but not if nobody knows about it.
Right.
So let's try to make sure everybody knows about it.
Yeah, it's a really good idea because I was just saying it's, you know, awesome, just not easy to find. It's not intuitively there.
Right, yeah.
Can I ask Dr. Thompson and Dr. Wyeth? And I, I know I've asked this before, um, and you might still not have figured it out, but like with the shifting of the ELA curriculum, does that shift what it says in here around social studies? Are you still analyzing that?
Um, we're still looking at that in terms of what we might be able to, to pilot with the social studies. We might be able to pilot, like, something at grade five and stuff like that, yeah.
Okay, so you can make adjustments.
Yeah, I, I talked with, um, Dave about the, this, the curriculum review cycle. I think we're getting close to sharing that out.
Okay. And then when we first came together to do all this, it was, you know, a pretty large group that you had together. And I'm not saying that you want every single person to go through this constant, you know, evaluation review process of it. Um, but I do wonder if as you're looking at the timeline and identifying if adjustments need to be made, um, not that I don't trust the administrators, because I, I do, I trust your team, but does that need to be a larger conversation?
Yeah, my, my plan, and Mrs. Smith would be very happy to hear me say this, but my, my, I mean, the strategic planning team is, is a strategic planning team.
Yeah.
Um, so, you know, I'm hoping that those people that were in the room that know the plan intimately, were part of developing it, would still be coming together to do the next plan. Of course, um, you know, the, the next action plan or how we're going to actualize these pieces, the, um, you know, the next question would be is should the next plan be a two-year plan as opposed to a one-year plan? Um, and then as we learn more about this medium, how can we maximize what it does? Because we're, because we basically set it up, it just says percent done, percent done, but you can do it as benchmarks.
Yeah.
And, and certain things are accomplished. And in some cases, that might be more appropriate than just percent done. So we're still, we're still learning. But one of the things we had to fleece out is they have early evidence, and the way they do it, that's a percentage of the whole. Where we did it in our planning process, it's just something to look for. So we had to straighten that up because the numbers were not looking good the first time we put it in. It's because of that, um, because some of those early evidences were not met. So it's a zero, but that's calculated in a way that really should not be calculated at all, so.
Just a quick comment on five point three. I totally understand why that needs to be adjusted. Um, and I'm not arguing to not do it because I do, I do agree, but I, I think the value or one of the strengths of five point three is the reference to our community collaborations, and we don't want to forget about them.
Right.
And three of them listed, I, a large role of those coalitions as well with Impact Learning Times Matter, and now the Sheriff's Task Force. And these are themes discussed at all of those coalitions where work is going to be done. And I think that we just need to realize it's being done in other places and to not reinvent the wheel and to collaborate as much as possible.
That's actually not one that we're, we're talking about changing for this year.
The cultural, oh, it was...
It was five point two, like, I think.
Oh, okay, oh, right, okay.
Yeah, five point two, yeah, five point two is the one that...
Okay, because five point three says it's off-target.
And, you know, and there's still, you know, and the question is, out of this, what's doable, what's a start? It's probably, how we've totally drawn it out, it maybe needs to be shrunk by a half or two-thirds. Doesn't mean we wouldn't necessarily do...
Right.
Nothing with that.
Right. I mean, honestly, I think some of your year two plans is already in here.
Oh, yeah.
Just have to shift.
Oh, yeah. Right, right. And it, and it was difficult to do this plan, because we didn't know where we would be.
Right.
So we had to try to, try to develop a plan that, no matter which road we were on, we would be able to, to work with, so.
Any other questions? Just to greet Dr. Thompson, thank you.
You're welcome.
So that leads us nicely into the discussion of goals for 2019, which is almost over, into 2020. Maya had shared with all of us an updated document that she and Dr. Thompson worked on with the goals, the standards, indicators, and evidence. Maya, do you want to guide us through? So, just one thing. Desi is having fun with us again. You know, they, they put out Administrator Evaluation Rubric in July of 2019. We started working on that, and then sometime between then and now, they put out, like So in August, they put out a pilot version of the Administrator Evaluation Rubric, but we decided to stick with the one that's actually approved and not jump into the pilot just yet. So just, if you are looking at Desi documents, and you're like, how come this doesn't line up?
Right.
This isn't the old rubric that we did last year, and it's, but it's not the brand-new rubric either. It's the one that, you know
The middle one?
It's the middle one.
It's the one we started looking at in September that says July 2019.
Right, which you would think when you were looking at it in
So if it says August 19 or January 12, don't read it.
Right. So, anyway, we, as, we have proposed goals here. As I said, the one thing that I added was this statement about, you know, evaluating the action steps, and, and we can talk about what we think about that date. But otherwise, you've seen these goals before. And then we just went into the indicators. We need to have indicators in one, at least one each in the four standards, which are Instructional, Leadership, Management, and Operations, Family and Community Engagement, and Professional Culture. We, the recommendation we saw was like six to eight total, so we were looking at eight sub-indicators. We think that these line up nicely, either with things that the committee has said they were interested in, or line up well with the, the goals, and the strategic plan, things like that. So, I copied in, at Dr. Thompson's suggestion, copied in the, what the rubric says about what it means to be proficient. So there's the parts that are in quotes and italics are, that's what, that means to be proficient. Because when I see something like meeting diverse needs, and like, what do they really mean by that? What they mean is, while observing principal practice and artifacts regularly provides feedback to ensure that principals are identifying and promoting appropriate inclusive teaching practices that meet the diverse learning needs of all students. So, just to give everybody a better idea of what we're looking at, and then we have suggestions in here for evidence. As Teresa has mentioned before, Desi and MASC are all recommending that we kind of go a little bit more broadly on evidence, not focusing on a binder, per se, but I, I think it is important to have some idea upfront of what evidence we might be looking for, but certainly, anything that the school committee directly observes during the course of the year is, you know, fair game for the evaluation. That's always been true, but they're kind of, you know, reemphasizing, thank you for, yeah. It's 9:30 at night, and I'm struggling for words. But I hope you've all had a chance to review it, and let me know if you have any suggestions for changes.
Let you know right now, or let you know via email?
Oh, I was hoping to approve it tonight.
We need to have a move on this. Did you eliminate one of the goals? We're down to five now? I'm fine with that?
Oh, we did. We, there was, there was, there was a professional practice goal, there was originally a professional practice goal under the, for the Leadership Matters program. And then we had suggested that maybe that wasn't as critical, that, not that Dr. Thompson shouldn't do it, but it wasn't necessarily a priority for the school committee.
Right.
Then we were talking about maybe doing the book club thing, but we decided that kind of, so, we're like, you know what, he doesn't, we don't need to have six goals.
Right. And, and basically, I thought that there were too many other pieces that weren't just under his purview that he had for a while on the rest of the town, so
Sure.
He's going to do it, but, you know, this lets everything be in his strict control.
Yeah, that makes sense. I just wanted to make sure I had the most recent version. So there's five goals, two under district improvement, two under student learning, and one professional practice goal.
Yes.
And the only changes I made were just for, like, typos. I just missed a couple.
Oh, good.
Small, I mean, it's not me, it's the software, so.
No, no, it's great. Always want a second set of eyes on these things.
Yeah. No, no feedback. I already gave you guys plenty of feedback before tonight, and I think that you've done a really great job. I think, you know, looking under the new system of really the SMART goals and how they want you to set everything up, do a little bit more work now, let's make it easier later. It, it's clear to me there's more of a roadmap here than we've had before. I just want to be sure, because this has been a sticky point for two years now, that the committee really has read this and feels like this is the evidence. This is why, when we come to the evaluation, which is the timeline I want to talk about in a moment, but whenever we evaluate Dr. Thompson, then this is what we're saying we want it to see throughout the year. And then maybe just a brief discussion and feedback of, because we're not going to be going to a binder of evidence, how are we looking for this evidence to be collected, or what are you envisioning, Dr. Thompson? Because you just want to be sure we're all on the same page now.
I think there's quite a bit of the evidence that we will see naturally during our meetings, especially with strategic plan updates and things like that. I think there are a few things where we've asked for some feedback, like narratives about, like narratives about instructional rounds. That's not something that we have visibility into. I mean, you mention it in our meetings, but I think I, when I was saying narratives about instructional rounds, I was hoping that maybe the principals might write a little bit about what they've done, what they're hoping to get out of it, what they're, you know, and some findings from it, not, and to be clear, the point of instructional rounds, as I understand it, is never to be findings about a particular teacher or anything like that. So I'm not looking for, you know
Right, right. It's a general problem of practice about, you know, what a school is, what's the implementation of this thing this school is working?
And we got a little bit of that today.
Yes, yeah.
So that was actually one of the, one, the, one of the pieces that I was going to offer some feedback on around the evidence piece, was I would actually like to see that drill down to the teacher level, and have the principals perhaps collect a statement from a teacher or two within the school about whether or not the feedback is identifying and promoting appropriate inclusive teaching practices. Does that make sense?
I, I consider that, too, and we talked about it, but I think it's really hard to get honest and plain feedback from people that are reporting to Dr. Thompson for his evaluation. So I don't think it would, it might be, I understand the, the goal, but I think that it, it might be difficult to, you know, ask for these people to, it's really his evaluation, and it's, it might color it in an overly positive way if they report to him. I don't know.
I agree, but I think we have a responsibility to know, I mean, that problem exists for literally everything. It doesn't allow us to get, and, so then essentially what we're saying is, we seed the fact that we're going to get a truthful observation of what's going on.
Well, I think that we should be getting feedback on everything overall from, you know, the school visits and appearances, but putting it as expected evidence is part of his valuation, might be a little bit overambitious.
I disagree. I see his role as being a leader, and part of a leader's job is to make sure that the vision trickles all the way down to the, all the way down to the students.
What's going
I'm talking about the, I'm not talking about the goals, I'm sorry. I'm talking about evidence in standard one, 1B3, meeting diverse needs. Because as either Teresa or Maya have said, I'm sorry, I don't remember, that one's, one of the ones that it would be very difficult for us to ever observe. So we need to create a different evidence standard for us to be able to see the effectiveness.
Right, but I work through the principals, through the teachers.
Correct. But, I don't know how to phrase this. I don't think that you would ever lie to us, however. You're basically saying, like, so just take my word for it, which, which we can do, but I'd like to have another evidentiary standard as well there.
Right. But, but my role, but my role is to work with the principals in their work with the teachers.
But I want to make sure that we're clear now and have the conversation now, yeah, about what evidence. So if it's not a statement from the teachers, that's fine, but I'd like to see, is there something, is there some way that we can do that? To me, it makes sense, since the teachers are the ones who are kind of implementing that vision. To me, it makes sense to see if they're being supported through the layers.
So, John, we, we talked about this in some other cycles, too, and like, I was really struggling with this two years ago, because this is not how I would have evaluated anybody in any other professional capacity. And the one year I had asked about doing like a 360 review, because that's just what I'm used to in like a business, you know, like, where you do have the people who are, you know, reporting to you, and that you are reporting to, and your clients, and like, everybody providing that type of feedback. And I, I think, like, with the way that it's set up through, like, Desi, and just like our authority versus Dr. Thompson's, like, there were some limitations there, and if you look at the binder that I know you don't want, from the MASC conference, that they did put out what I have found to be like a really helpful rubric on the type of evidence that you're supposed to consider for each of these indicators. And nowhere on here does it directly suggest or say coming from, like, the teachers in that way. And they do say, like, you, you need to make sure that any evidence adheres to all confidentiality rules and regulations. And I don't know exactly what those are, but we would want to be mindful, we're not asking our teachers to do anything that now starts to be more like a performance or evaluation of them. But I do wonder if some type of survey that goes out to staff that is, you know, unanimous, or a survey even to parents, yeah, sorry, or a survey to parents, and, you know, how are you feeling about whatever, you know, I want a survey as a way to get that feedback at the end of the year.
It's the same, yeah, it's the same concept. It's just allowing, it's just allowing for the, to, for us to assess whether or not the vision is effectively being implemented and supported.
Right. But if you look at, but if you look at the, at the statement under 1B3, "while observing principal practice and artifacts," "regularly provide feedbacks to ensure that principals are identifying and promoting appropriate inclusive teaching practices that meet the diverse needs of all students." So that's
So who are they, who are they identifying and promoting appropriate inclusive teaching practices to?
The teachers.
Which is why they only wait.
The principals are evaluated by Dr. Thompson on their own rubric. That's not our goal.
Right, but
No, I hear what you're saying.
It's, it's, right, it's to, in order to figure out if the vision is, so I like the idea of a survey. I'm not wedded to the idea that it has to be a teacher's statement or anything like that. I'm just saying I would like for there to be some evidence considered around the baseline of where it's being implemented.
Right.
There's just no other way for us to, I, I don't see any other way for us to fairly evaluate whether or not that's having the impact that we want it to have.
Right, but by asking teachers for that, you're actually getting evaluative feedback on principals.
So I'm faculty member, I get evaluated by everybody up and down the chain. Students evaluate me, so this does not seem like a big deal to me.
And this is how I was thinking before. I'm telling you, like, I struggle with this so much, because it's not how I have ever operated in any professional capacity either. But I have come to realize that Desi is just different. And that, you know, if you, if you read the rubric, if you read what we're supposed to be doing with Dr. Thompson, it is strictly from him to principals. What you're asking for should be, and I would trust that Dr. Thompson is doing that from principals down.
Can we have a school committee member observe the rounds? Or observe a round?
I don't know, can we?
It's not, it's not evaluated, I'm sure. Do you have an opinion on that, Dr. Wyatt? You were in the, I, I was not in the contract discussions here for, you know, the teacher evaluation piece.
Yeah, I think we need to check with all parties involved, you know, to make sure that there's a comfort level with that. But, but with the artifacts, if I can comment on, on the discussion a little bit, the word artifacts to me means like staff faculty meetings, which you collect, the agendas of those faculty meetings. And often, I think you've asked the principals to put on those agendas, discussion of instructional practices, and have staff report out on what they're doing, how it's working, and stuff like that. So that's a concrete artifact that you could use for evaluation purposes.
Right.
And then, you know, I mean, it gets difficult, because when you say meet the diverse needs, well, how are you going to judge that? Well, that's in the assessment data. You know, are kids performing well? So you've got the Renaissance, you've got NCAS, you've got other local, you know, assessment tools to try to get at that piece. And if the kids aren't, you know, aren't being successful, then something's not working, you know, back up the line.
So I think that representative sampling of the teaching practices that have been implemented also does the same thing, which is what Alex just said, so.
And this, it does mention here agendas for meetings or professional development on inclusion and diversity, but maybe we can make that more broad.
Exactly. I would like to see a report out of the, of a sampling. It doesn't have to be every single one, just a sampling of the appropriate inclusive teaching practices and how they're being promoted and identified.
You're saying, just goes all the way down to the teaching level?
So, yeah, basically, it's just basically, we're just making a request for something to be included on the minutes of a meeting at this point now.
Can you repeat what you said?
Nope, nope.
Sampling of inclusive teaching practices.
To, so, I don't know how to frame it, but we would like for the minutes to include a sampling of how appropriate inclusive teaching practices have been identified and promoted. So basically, I just took the language of this, and put a "how" in front of it.
So being cognizant of pitfalls in previous evaluation cycles, and also looking at the strategic plan, and making sure we're asking Dr. Thompson to deliver something that lines up with the strategic plan. If you look at 3.7 in the strategic plan, that is currently one of them that are off-target. And, you know, Dr. Thompson did acknowledge that Laurie Sinino has started to do this, but, you know, she's new to our district as of July 1st. There's been a lot of fires to put out. There's been a lot of movement, as we know, with like special ed and ELL, so she's just starting to do this. So I guess before we determine, yes, that's what we were asking Dr. Thompson to be evaluated on, I want to make sure that is actually feasible for Laurie, because if it's not doable at Laurie's level, it's not going to be doable as an evaluation marker for Dr. Thompson.
Right. What we had said, just to remind everybody, this says that we want a report from Student Services on the goals and approach for meeting diverse needs.
Right.
So not like a checklist of everything I've done, but just kind of like more of a philosophical statement of like, this is what we're hoping to
Okay. I just want to make sure it lines with what I'm hearing from you, John. Maybe I'm not understanding what you're asking for when it gets down to the teaching level, because I don't know, and I could be wrong, and Laurie could tell me I'm wrong, but I don't know if getting it down to the teaching level is happening this year. I believe she's more in her, like, assessment of where are we, and starting to create the roadmap. And I, I think what you're asking for is more of next year's strategic.
I'm not asking, I don't read this as only for teaching practices under Laurie's purview. I think that's the difference.
I agree with you. Yeah, I do read this as a special ed-only thing.
Exactly.
I take diverse to actually mean the entire spectrum.
Yeah, me, too. That's what I
Well, this is just why I want to clarify, because
That's why we're doing it.
Look at things in the strategic plan, and, and the way inclusion is being used, it can be used in different ways.
Yep.
So I just want us to hash it out now, so we're all clear.
Right.
Yep. I thought that with the, because those two things are actually separate, there's a separate report from Laurie already in evidence.
I mean, if you, right, if you have inclusive teaching practices where you told them they're being successful in the classroom, then I'm looking for other services. Or shouldn't need other services.
You're the one being evaluated.
I know, well, it is, right, but it is, but it is also, you know, in general, an area that, that needs work, so. Yeah, it is a, I would say new conversation, but it's a one that needs to be revisited, let's say, so.
I have one more, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry, I was, I need to speak to you.
Standard four, professional culture, communication skills. This one I don't have very well form, because I don't know how to do it, but there have been I've been concerned with kind of how sometimes some of the feedback is coming from principals to, to Dr. Thompson, to us, and then how stuff is getting from us to Dr. Thompson, to the principals, specifically maybe around like fundraising and PTOs and some of those types of things. And so I'm not sure how to, and if any, if, if you're all looking at me with blank stares, I can drop it, because
No, I, I think we talked about this a little bit in the long-term study, and, you know You know, some of it is policy work and then asking Dr. Thompson to see through with the procedure piece. But I, I do think that's a valid question of, you know, what is the flow of communication and, um, you know, Dr. Thompson, you're in a tricky spot where you have to like consistently manage up and manage down. And that's a skill set that I don't envy you for having to, you know, implement. Um, so is there something we should be looking for? And then also, is there something that you need? Is there a resource or support system that we need to put in place?
More.
Well, if you stop the clock every, every week or two, that would be great.
Sure, no problem.
Yeah.
Just unplug the wifi for an hour or two?
No, but it doesn't, well, um, when I was in DC, I, you know, we were in the conference and I got back after four hours, I had 105 emails.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
It's just, yeah, and I get yelled at at home. It's like, you don't, I'm there. And then I lose things and then I'm in trouble, so, uh, yeah, but.
But I think Joan brings up a good point, that when I was putting together this proposed evidence, there is that piece that's kind of missing. I was focusing on like communication coming to the school committee, but there is that important part of Dr. Thompson's job, which is the go between, between the committee and the rest of the administration and back and forth and, um, and most of this is about communication with family or families are, you know, like FinCom and Town Needing, which of course I think is important, but not the only thing.
So Joan, you were asking for different evidence on this? Cause it seems, it seems like.
I'm asking for evidence that addresses Teresa and Maya's point around the managing up and down. There's a lot in this that you're, there's a lot in this that is all of the external outreach that you need to do, but there is nothing about the internal communication that quite frankly he's doing. And he asked, like, it's a, you can't do your job unless you have, unless you're doing that.
Right. But a lot of it's phone calls and emails, and I'm not quite sure how to provide the evidence for that.
That's what I'm tossing out there.
That we have and I go to, I know.
Well, but I don't, I don't think, I guess when we're saying something here is evidence that we would be considering, I, in some ways, I think this is a way to help us kind of make it a little bit more clear what we were, what we kind of consider falls under this thing, but it doesn't necessarily mean that would, we would be looking for specific evidence, because I think it's something that we're observing all the time.
Right.
You know, and so, but it, it could be something that we're saying, like, that's something we will consider during the evaluation, not necessarily look for like a specific piece of paper that says this is the evidence of this.
So I'm thinking like some concrete examples of that would be like, we, don't laugh when I say we have policies, but we have policies. Um, and they're, they're not, right, like, so like, I just remember last year we were having, um, like, there was confusion around the Callahan and the PTO and the fundraising, and there was confusion at one point with the Willett and fundraising and not understand, maybe I know some of this from PTO versus being on school committee, but, um, there was some confusion around that. So a checkpoint on that would, like, a concrete checkpoint on that would be that processes around, um, PTO fundraising gifts would be followed, right? Because that would involve, do you see what I'm trying to get at? That, that's a concrete indicator that you've communicated down to your principals. They understand the expectations. Principals are communicating back up to school committee in an appropriate manner. Does that make, that's the only con, that's like, I'm trying to find concrete things that don't involve extra work, but that are kind of solid behavioral indicators of the communication process working.
So.
Wow, that was good for quarter of ten.
Don't make her say it again. Just re-watch the segment at whatever time it is, like, whether it's.
Right, but how, what is the behaviors that let us know that communication is flowing properly both up and down? That's what I'm.
So if we, like in the policy subcommittee, we're working on policy, then we come here, we approve the policy. It's not our job as a school committee to make sure everybody knows about the policy change. That is your lucky job. Um, so how do we know, like, what, what do you do to get that communication out? And how could that be shared?
So maybe it is, it is just as simple as making sure that in your superintendent reports at the school committee, that you're making sure that you're communicating to us the communication that's going down, um, so that we have it in the minutes, so that we can go back and look at it as evidence.
Or maybe even things that you mentioned to us in your weekly update, because, because that's the imaging, that's the follow-up communication to us, like often, you know, this situation unfolded, this happened in this school. So that could be a valuable tool.
So maybe for evidence, maybe could we put weekly updates and maybe could we request that you, I'm not really, I'm sorry, I'm totally jumping the gun on the committee here, but it would be, like, to me, it would, might make sense for us to pay attention to that by just adding a section around communication in the weekly updates. You do a brief, like, this is what I, these are the major communication pushes for the week. We updated this policy. So if you think about the field trip, you think about this week, right?
Right.
You're going to be, hopefully we'll, we'll approve the field trip policy. That's something that's going to need to go out to everybody. You just make sure you note that in the weekly update to us, that that went out to everybody. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Or me, or, I mean, you can copy some of those emails, but that's awful.
I was gonna say, or you CC Joan on everything. That's what I'm hearing.
Right. Yeah, and then, yeah, but then I have to go back to the next week and try to remember every single. I mean, it, the problem is, it's, it, you know, there's, there's a, it's constant, it's never ending.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, I got, I got yelled at from Priscilla from answering texts at 4:30 the other morning. So, and what are you answering texts at 4:30? If I don't do that, I won't get to it. So the ability to remember all the various forms and document, so it's this, the pace of the superintendency, there's hardly ever a time to stop and take a breath. So that, you know, is problematic for the logs, for the this, for the that, for the, so, yeah, so, and, you know, I mean, and, I mean, I've been using those communications weekly and I'll, I'll be quite honest with you, most people do them every other week on the off weeks from, from school committee meetings. But, you know, I'm trying to be very communicative and very transparent, so. But a lot of the, my purpose that is to make sure you know what's going on and there's any bubbling crises that you have a heads up. I, I've never looked at it as my documentation for, you know, evidence of things. I mean, if you want me to do that, I can try to do that, but again, I'm, you know, I mean, I'm just trying to think of this week of all the things that communicated with, with procedures and processes is about discipline. I'm talking with principals about, you know, crises that, that they're dealing with and they're building. I mean, and those are based on policy, but I don't necessarily go back and say, well, which policy, this was policy, you know, JB, XYZ, and this is what we communicated about that. Fundamentally, I don't, I don't have the time to do that. So I'm not against, I mean, it is something that I do. I'm just not quite sure how, you know, I mean, there are communications that, questions that you ask and then yours CC'd with it and that sort of thing, but, um, you know, but that's kind of in the, in the natural weave of things and that a lot of it comes from the chair, so I don't know how that gets back to. Right.
And I just think that like, thinking about how the process will work, you'd have to go and differentiate between what is mostly confidential and what he can share. It's probably a bit of decision-making that has to happen on that, so I think it's gonna be a massive time suck from the limited time that he has currently. So I want to, I, I hear what you're saying. I just don't know how to do it.
Right.
You know?
Yeah. And I'm not trying to be difficult. I'm just trying to think of how I can.
I came into this conversation saying, I don't know how to frame this, but this is what my concern is, so.
No, it's valid. And I think we talked about it in, in other realms too, and I think that this is the place to discuss it, because it did come up in the last round of evaluation around communication and wanting, um, not that you're not transparent, you are, but just wanting, um, it document it in some way that we could easily reference when it come to evaluation time. Um, I mean, with the new revised, not the August, but the July one, I, I haven't looked to see if it's still in there in the August one, but, um, you know, they did say, and at the MASC conference in the evaluation session that Dr. Thompson, I went to, they did emphasize is that the responsibility to uh, collect that evidence is on the school committee as well as Dr. Thompson. And they did say that you could have, um, like documentation and observations from the school committee. So, not that I necessarily want to put more work on myself, but something I could do, if you want, is every month, because I see Dr. Thompson multiple times a week in different task forces and subcommittees, like I could easily do a quick, these are the meetings I was in with him, this is where I saw this policy be communicated, or, um, this is where I noticed the communication is getting hung up. And then that could be shared timely with all of us. I mean, I could do that if that would be a helpful piece of evidence.
Can we survey the teachers and the principals? If it, can we survey the teachers and the principals? If we create that survey, that puts the burden on us to create it and then they have to fill it out. But again, it's the same type of thing. Are the policy changes, are the budget, are, are the, are the procedures being effectively carried out and are they being effectively transmitted when changed? That's basically, right?
Although the tricky thing is, not, not saying that this is the issue, but like if, if something just wasn't communicated, how would they know?
That's what I asked.
You know, like, how do you say, like, well, no, I didn't get that information that you thought I got, because.
That's what I was getting at. That's why I was asking for the survey is like, you know, we changed the following policies. Were you notified?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, no?
There, I did go to a session at the conference on, um, like, community engagement and, and it's on our long-term agenda for January, February, and I think this topic a little bit more, but there are districts who every year survey the staff to get a pulse on like staff, um, climate and school climate. And, um, I think these are some of the questions I ask, like, do you feel informed? Do you feel that you're getting the communication? Um, those are questions in some surveys I've seen. Currently going through a quite large survey process with the school start time. And knowing that we're going to be doing a budget survey soon and that some others would be coming up on the radar, not against surveys, but I don't know that we have all the staff and the resources that we need. Um, because the school start time task force alone has fallen largely on my lap with Marla and Ryan helping it a little bit. Um, and I'm using Excel and like I should not be doing it, but I am because we need to get done. So although I'm the one who brought up the survey, I'm now also thinking, is that a realistic expectation on our technology department?
Right, right.
And I don't know.
I mean, can we just, could we just say something like, school committee member notes on effectiveness of policy communication? Or something kind of vague like that and just make it clear that that's something we'll be considering.
Yes.
And then that could be for any of us, right? If we're in a meeting and we observe something, um, okay.
It allows us to continue the conversation.
Yeah.
With fair, and now I feel like Dave, you can't, you know, you've read this and like I read this as just being like, your only responsibility for communication is.
Is external.
Is to families and now we're all on the same page.
Stakeholders is, you know.
Right, and now we're all the same, but our evidence, our evidence was.
I mean, you did include email updates to staff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Effectiveness of communication.
It's all the things working with him.
Right, but, but I can't come back to this enough. A key piece of his job is to make sure that
Yeah.
it gets translated down. And what I'm, what I just want to make sure that we have a way of doing is assessing that fairly. That's all.
Right.
So do we want, um, because again, we're having to do the whole binder thing, do we want a, a Google folder that we all can access that says like evidence? And then if we have an observation, we just put it in there automatically or?
Yeah, that works.
Okay.
So what I am proposing we add is school committee member notes on effectiveness of communication regarding policy.
Can you add and changes, just in general, and changes, just make it nice and big and rough?
And?
Policy and procedures.
Policy and procedures?
Yeah.
Where did you want changes?
I don't, I'm good now.
Okay. All right.
I'm good now. Thank you.
Okay, so.
That's all my feedback.
Anything else? So I have currently, under standard one, 1B3, adding sampling of how appropriate inclusive teaching practice have been identified and promoted. And then under 4C1, school committee member notes on effectiveness of communication regarding policy and procedures. And those are the only amendments to what we currently have.
Yep.
Okay, so a motion to approve is amended?
Seconded.
Oh, you made the motion? Sorry. You were asking for it. You confused me.
I was already voting yes, so you're good. You don't even have to do anything. We're good.
So all of the favor. Confuse me for a second.
At 10 o'clock, here we go.
I worry about we got changes.
Maya, Dave.
Yes.
We just ignore Teresa for a moment.
It's totally fine with you. It's just making sure you're happy. So thank you for everybody's work on that. Um, so we already did the Green Communities vote, um, with the MOU for joint facilities. We do have a joint facilities meeting tomorrow that Maya, Dave and I will be at, so we should probably get some feedback on that.
I have a bunch of stuff to share regarding the, um, joint facilities. So, let's see. Here's a spreadsheet to look at. Actually, there's two pages you can, but you can pass that set down to Alec. And then pass, sorry, that's an extra page. Pass that set down.
That's a set.
It's a set. This down. This down. Okay, and then I have another sheet that I want to share with everybody. Okay, and then this is about the MOU. So this is just a single sheet. Take one, pass it down. Okay, so let me just take you through the spreadsheet first. Okay, so I just want to, I think I've shared some of this with you last time, but I don't remember how much I went through it. So, um, if we take the general government and we pull out their facilities amounts, and then we take the school committee and we, the school budget, we pull out their facility, the facilities parts. Facilities parts mean like custodial salaries, all utilities, um, building maintenance stuff. Snow and ice for the schools. It does not include repair and replace budgets, because that's usually about furnishings and things like that, and so that the schools would still have control over those budgets. So, um, I pulled those out and showed you, um, on the right-hand side, what the increases are expected to be year to year. The facilities yearly increases are pretty close to the school without the facilities. It doesn't make a huge difference in our percent increase. One thing that's interesting is, um, when you pull out the general government facilities, it's because they were only predicting that their facilities were going to go up 2.5% per year, which I think was a, I think they lowballed that number personally. Um, there, it's looking like their percentages are going to go up over 3.5% increase per year, but that's not our problem specifically, you know, so like I, I, and, and of course, these are all projections and when you're projecting out five years, it's, um.
It's less and less reliable.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, kind of looked at a few different options. Um, one is, you know, if we just left everything as it was, where we just had a general government budget and a school budget, and then if we, so that's sort of the status quo option. The other option is if we had three different departments, um, and I was looking at if we did three different departments, I was, we could do 40.4% for general government, 52.4% for the schools, and 7.2% would get us facilities. And this would give us the, so then these, um, rows here show you what those projections would look like for how much money would be available. And then the next thing's down where I say variation from projection, we were saying that the, this is saying that in that first year, if we went with those percentages, general government would wind up like $74,000 ahead of what they were claiming they needed. And facilities would be about $33,000 below what they said they needed if we tried to set, the thing is, like a fixed percentage isn't going to give you a perfect solution, because not everything, but then if you look ahead five years, then the schools are coming out ahead. They were, we were a little behind before, but then we'd be ahead and facilities would be ahead and then general government would be behind. But it, that would give us kind of like a ballpark. And of course, that's the whole point of the budget balancing committee is that there's some opportunity to talk about things that are changing year to year and maybe, you know, we have a split that we start with, but it's a starting point, but it's not the ending point. Um, one thing that had been project, um, suggested at one time was that the facilities could be a shared expense. Uh, but typically the way we deal with shared expenses is those numbers kind of come off the top before the split. And that would mean that facilities would sort of get first dibs on all the money, which, um, I don't think is really what anybody actually wants. And, but I did run the numbers with like what the projections would like it. And, but I did run the numbers with, like, what the projections would like it, if, if we did that. Um, if we pulled out, if we leave everything status quo, but you reflect the fact that there has been an override. Instead of having a 55-45 split, we would have a 58-42 split. But, um, if we pulled out the facilities, then it looks like it would be like 56.5 and 43.5. Because there's differences in how much, the, like, what percentage of the budget is facilities for school and what percentage is, um, so in fact, for schools, uh, oh, and then I, I tried to pull out utilities costs. Because we know that utilities go up at different rates than salaries. Um, when the, when Mr. McQuade and, um, Molly did their analysis, they just pulled out what was the government, the general government facilities, but they didn't specify what specifically was utilities. So I tried to ballpark it and I pulled out the most recent town meeting book that I could get my hands on, which happened to be FY19. I don't know what happened to my FY20 book, it's somewhere in my house. But in FY19, um, utilities were roughly 50% of the general government facility spending. They budgeted almost $700,000 for utilities that year. Um, in the school, utilities are approximately 30% of our facilities spending. I think the difference there is partly that we, our snow and ice number was included in facilities. Their snow and ice number wasn't really because it's actually under the DPW mostly. And so it's just a different thing and I, you know, so, um, but if you look at total utility spending, like, how base, and these are rough numbers. It's roughly two-thirds schools, one-third general government. And that makes sense because we have really large buildings, you know?
Yeah.
The, we don't have the 24-hour-a-day buildings like the police and fire building.
Right.
But we, you know, the high school is huge, right? You know, the, the, the general government side, town hall is not gonna draw anywhere near the amount of electricity that the middle school does.
No.
Oh, plus, we also have two electric buildings, or three. Is the Willett also electric? The Savage, the Willett and the Coakley are all electric and so. So anyway, that's, so these are the analysis. But then, you will all remember that I had made some questions a while back and I wanted to know some things about. So, so if there's an increase in the operating money that we wanted to put to small capital projects, how would that impact the budgets? And with the status quo budget, we would assume that the schools would get roughly 58% of that money and the, um, and, uh, but I'm not sure how that would impact our, what we pledged to only increase by three and a half percent. I think if we say, like, oh, instead of putting, you know, like, having this be a separate expenditure, we're gonna put some free cash maybe into the operating budget. So we're always doing some small capital stuff. I don't know that that would be expected to fall under that three and a half percent. Um, so I kinda broke that out. Um, I think the, the fairest thing is that facilities as a third department and then, you know, that facilities money would go there. And either the other facilities budget items would have to go down to reflect that or we'd have to discuss adjusting the split if we wanted to start more of an investment in that capital. Um, if there's a significant increase in utility costs, the schools projected that we would, our utility costs would go up 5% per year. But if, say, costs went up 6% per year instead, so that was like an extra percent, that would increase our utility costs by about $15,000. Um, if we did this as a shared expense, then that 6% increase would mean approximately $40,000 more for utilities, which would then mean roughly $23,000 less for schools. Again, I think that's not a good option, but I think everybody agrees that the best option is this facilities as a third department. And so if the facilities is a third department, that means that they would need to find a way to absorb that $40,000 increase or we would need to adjust that, the split in the Budget Balancing Committee. Um, if revenues drop, um, we would, with the status quo or the third department, everybody would kind of see their budget hit proportionally. Uh, but if facilities was just shared expense, then they would get money first. And again, that's not what we want. Um, then there was kind of a question of like, what happens if we're able to achieve more energy efficiencies? Um, with the status quo, obviously, if the schools were able to save, we would keep any savings that we got on, based on our building. And general government would keep the savings from their buildings. But that's, of course, only assuming that the savings is more than the projections. And like I said, you know, it depends on whether or not each side has projected accurately. But, um, if the facilities was a shared expense, then any savings would reduce the total facilities budget and 56.5% would be passed along to schools. Um, and I noted here that the utilities, at school utilities are like 66% of the total utilities. So that wouldn't necessarily be in our favor. But then, if the facilities is a third department, then savings on utilities could be spent on other facilities department. But we wouldn't, you know, have control over whether that was like, you know, savings from the schools actually went back into the schools' buildings or savings from general government buildings went back into general government buildings. It would all go into, to one pie. But overall, I think that, now that I've run these numbers, I'm comfortable that we could pull facilities, ultimately pull the facilities budget out of the school budget and still live within our pledge. And, um, I would not be in favor of making facilities a shared department before the split. But if it was gonna be a third department, I feel that that would be a reasonable solution and, and would be something that the schools could live with budget-wise. So, that's just for your information. And if you guys have more questions later, I can certainly talk about that some other time. Or you guys can email me or whatever. Um, and then you should have seen the drafts of the, um, MOU from David Hajar. And, um, I then typed up some notes that I'm gonna share tomorrow night. And then I, well, it's a starting point for notes I'm gonna share tomorrow night, but I wanted to take your feedback as well and bring that to the meeting tomorrow night. Um, I'm gonna suggest that we add an annual review to the main MOU. And I don't think that this is gonna be controversial. I think, as we've been having these conversations, it's been like, this is not set in stone. We, you know, we're not gonna do something that's not working going forward. But I think it doesn't hurt to put something in there that says, "On an annual basis, the facilities, the director of the facilities department, the superintendent, the general manager and representatives from the Board of Selectmen and the School Committee shall meet to discuss the function of the facilities department and to suggest revisions to the MOU if appropriate. Any amendments to the MOU must be approved by both the Board of Selectmen and the School Committee." I think that's what everybody expects, but-
Yeah.
Can't hurt to put it in writing.
Absolutely.
Um, and then we had also asked for, um, because the proposal is that for FY21, we would set up the management structure but not change where any of the money is. Um, I think it makes sense to call out a few things that, about that first year. And so we had talked about having an addendum to the MOU. And I think, um, David Hajar suggested some things, but I was going to suggest, um, a little bit more detail, saying that the facilities management would be housed at the Savage Center. Uh, that the school department would fund salaries for the director and the administrative assistant at the current funding levels. And that the general government budget will include salaries for the two new positions plus additional money for a salary increase for the director to reflect the increase in responsibilities for the director. Cause I think, we've all said that we can't envision this working without bringing in some additional resources. And so I wanna make it clear, what is the school department promising to bring to the table? And what is general government promising to bring to the table? So, those are my proposals, but I welcome your questions and feedback.
I think you captured what's been discussed at those last two meetings anyway. And, um, people have said it, so we need it in writing. Yeah.
Has there been any estimates of the savings that this will result for the town overall?
We really don't anticipate that it's going to give us operational savings in the short term. What we, and, and that's been clear since we had started discussions on this. Because in fact, it will require additional investments. What we're hoping is that it will give us better maintenance of the buildings over the long run. Smarter preventive maintenance, um, that it will, and that it will free up the fire chief and the library director and-
Right.
You know, those people to focus on their jobs rather than building maintenance.
I do question whether the amount of actual building staff would be enough.
Right, that's why I said, like, I wanted to make sure that we put in the extra two positions. That the general government has to include those in their budget for FY21.
Yeah.
But maybe that's not even enough.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, because we, I mean, you're basically doubling the number of buildings. Granted, many of them are newer.
Yeah.
But, you know, our staff right now is pretty out straight, just keeping the buildings we have up and running, so.
I mean, there are certainly custodians at those other buildings that-
Right.
Like, would be rolled into this.
Yeah, yeah, but-
What were the two positions Paul Riccardi mentioned? The plumber and the operations manager?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Right? Because, yes, the administrative assistant currently becomes the business manager in the new model. But he was pretty vocal at the last meeting about the two positions, that he felt-
Right, right.
He wasn't confident he could do this if he didn't have them in place.
Right, right. And if your current electrician becomes the operations manager, you need to replace the electrician.
Right, okay.
Right, cause there's a lot of electrical work that goes on.
Right, right.
A lot.
So I was gonna, I just put two positions, cause I couldn't remember exactly what we were saying. So I wanted to check with Paul and make sure that-
Yeah, I'm just saying we should call it out.
I agree, we should call it out.
But I could, I can't recall either. I, I know he talked about the plumber and I know there's some shifting going on. If you look on page five, the, the flow chart we have, but I just couldn't remember exactly it. But I know he felt very strongly that there were two he needed to do this successfully.
Yeah.
Right.
I really thought there was conversation about efficiencies.
Oh, there's been conversations about it.
Maybe that has shifted?
There's efficiencies, I think, more on the general government side?
That's what I'm talking, I meant overall. I didn't mean for the schools. I meant, as a town, have we seen a projection around efficiencies? I don't mean from the school side, cause-
No.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but we have the efficient model that we're hoping to expand to the whole town.
Exactly.
So that's why I was asking, what are the, has the town projected any? Cause I thought the money from the plumber was coming because we'd be able to use the in-house plumber, the on-staff plumber versus contracting out every time a general government won.
Yeah.
That was a particular efficiency. I imagine the electrician would be, like, have we deferred maintenance, having a schedule with people who are on it?
There was a workflow conversation, the way that we manage the work versus right now on the general government side. And, and Paul has ideas of how that could all come together and be more efficient.
Right.
Um, but then definitely their contracted positions, if we had them on staff.
Yeah.
Right, it's, it's, yeah.
From our side, we're not, yeah, I was asking from the whole town.
Yeah, and that's, that's a, I, I don't, it, it doesn't necessarily save us, you know, the schools' money or, or efficiencies at all.
No, 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 I know.
But, and, you know, on the other side, it, I mean, you're not saving money on staffing. You're not saving, you know, you, you, you might save money over the long haul where you have somebody to fix something in-house when it's a small problem as opposed to hiring somebody, having to rebuild something when it's a large.
Right.
So that's, you know, but you can't-
I'm wondering if anyone has taken a crack at making an estimate on-
I'm not sure how you would predict what's going to break.
So, I mean-
Start from averages.
Right, David Hajar did a lot of numerical analysis in the beginning, looking at, at, you know, spending and, and percentage, like, how much money we're spending to maintain each building and stuff like that. But his general analysis is, it's not gonna save money. That doesn't mean that there won't be efficiencies.
Okay.
So there are things like, like you said, it would be, you know, if we take all this money that we've been spending on plumbing contracts and the money that the general government's been spending on plumbing contracts and the money that the schools have been spending on plumbing, plumbing contracts, and put it together and hire a plumber, that should give us more plumbing services for that same amount of money. But we haven't exactly quantified that.
Right.
But it won't reduce the bottom line.
And simply something breaks, instead of having to shut down a bathroom for two days until you can get a plumber in, you have a plumber.
You send the plumber over.
Right, so that kind of turnaround piece is an efficiency, but not necessarily a big cost savings.
If, if you look at, um, I think it was in our packet, I don't think I brought this from Paul.
It is, yeah.
Okay, so you can bring other things from Paul, but I didn't think I brought this. Um, so the Town Memorial Facilities Management Department Summary of Service and Cross-Responsibilities. Like, it doesn't explicitly say what you're asking, Joan, but like, on page two, under operations, it does reference, these are areas that we would be monitoring. But-
Right.
How are we gonna monitor?
It's, it's essentially the same question as like, so we've said we're gonna do these things, let's make an addendum and write it down. We've said there's gonna be efficiencies, but we haven't actually sat down and, and that, we don't need to spend any more time on this.
Yeah.
Cause it was just a curiosity question.
It's a good question.
We don't need to spend any more time.
So any other things, questions, comments about the MOU that you would like us to bring to the meeting tomorrow night?
The third department versus a shared is gonna end up in the MOU, I would imagine?
I think it, I thought it kinda was.
Yeah, number six on the back. So it is understood the budget for the facilities managed department will fully implement, it will be a third budget.
Okay.
Outside of school and general government.
Oh, right, okay.
So that is in there?
Sorry.
No, that's okay, it was recently added.
Yeah, it was.
It was on the drafts you've seen.
Because we had recently done this analysis and everybody kinda came to understand that that was the thing that made the most sense.
I, I do think David Hajar's hope is tomorrow at that meeting, that as a joint facilities committee, we're voting on this draft and then bringing it back to the school committee and the board of selectmen.
No, I think the MOU, it reflects all of the feedback that at least we've made.
Yeah.
So.
All right, good.
So we will talk about this again on December four and if needed, December 16. Well, we have to see what comes out this March.
Yeah.
We're almost done, guys, hang in there. This should be a really quick, I hope, conversation and the last time we have to talk about filter policies.
I don't have them in my packet.
Oh, I have them in mine.
I have them in mine.
Dave and Matt, I'm sure, may I be excused, cause I've got a shadow of student early mom on.
I suppose so.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
The shadow knows.
Do you want my mom's?
Yeah, just- Real quickly, um, so the, there were two main changes, um, which were discussed in the last committee meeting. One was to add the, um, names of the policies. Uh, the other was, um, to add the language that essentially says, um, other, uh, for day field trips, the day field trip policy. Ordinary day field trips must be submitted at least four weeks in advance by sponsoring teacher to the building principal for authorization by the superintendent or their designee, which allows Dr. Thompson to designate the, um, Jonathan Longley or the director of finance or director of athletics to, to make those. So just to try to streamline that. That becomes a procedure, um, which will be handled internally. The other change was the result of feedback that came via email, or a question that came via email, um, was whether or not we needed a separate overnight, uh, separate out-of-state policy so that every time our students go to Canobie Lake State Park, Canobie State. I'd always call it, it's, it's not a state park.
Yeah.
It's an amusement park.
In another state.
If they go to Providence. That, does the school committee really need to know that? Um, and we, um, in the Policy Subcommittee decided that the main concern for school committee was overnight policies, overnight field trips versus out-of-state field trips. So the, um, policies now reflect, one is an overnight field trip policy and one is a day field trip policy with a reference to the student travel and student travel regulation policies, which discourages travel between the times of 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM.
Questions? Cause I'm about to push them through.
No, it's good, thank you.
Pusher first.
Okay, so all in favor?
Nice job.
And that's important, we will know if you process this communication.
Nope, I'm keeping it secret.
If we get anything for Canobie Lake or Providence for our day trip.
For Canobie Lake State Park. For that, please.
So I don't think we need to talk about the MAC conference in, in depth, but, um, you do have a binder. And I was selective in what I asked Priscilla to put together, cause I think these are things that are gonna be useful moving forward. So there's one tab with some of the superintendent evaluation. There's a tab on school committee governance and self-assessment. And if you haven't already, please look for the email I sent yesterday, the doodle poll, on a workshop that I wanted to get us all together for in January on that topic. Um, there's some policy information that Joan and Dr. Thompson and I have already started to dive into in the Policy Subcommittee and we'll bring forward to you soon. And then there's some budget information. Um, Maya had already emailed out a copy of her notes in her update. And a lot of what she referenced is in this tab, so now you haven't. Um, so that's what's in the binder. Was there anything you wanted to share at the conference?
No, I mean, I guess I've just let everybody know that, like, the sessions I attended were communicating the budget transparency and trust, interest-based bargaining, what it is and when it's worth a try, collaboratives in their public schools, high-quality, cost-effective partnership relationships, 70 minutes on chapter 70, imagination, intelligence and creativity, school committee self-evaluation, building community support for school construction projects, and thumbs up or thumbs down, social media and school districts.
And I went to a bunch of the budget ones last year that they offered again this year, so I didn't go. But, um, I did go to the evaluation ones, a bunch of policy. so I didn't go, but I did go to the evaluation ones, a bunch of policy, I went to a number of SEL oriented ones, Dr. Thompson's and some of those as well, and then I was also with Maia in the middle school building one. What was your favorite one, Dr. Thompson?
What was my favorite one? I went to lots on evaluating the superintendent. Yeah, and, you know, interest-based bargaining, the, the budget piece, you know, it, it really is, it, it's a great conference, it's the first week in November, put it on your calendar now, because it was nice to have friends there and not be there all alone.
Weren't there all the last two years I've been there with you every year?
I know. It was nice to have new friends.
I'm not going to go next year now.
Right, we had, we had a nice lunch, yeah, it was good. No, it, it really is a good opportunity to learn from other school committees, to learn from the association, or, you know, superintendents and, and school members that learn together, so.
Yeah. And most of the committee members in other districts I spoke to, their boards are much larger than ours, seven to 10.
Right.
Just food for thought. And then just lastly, on, before we, the consent agenda, so Dave and I, on Monday night, were at the first Sheriff's Task Force on Juvenile Substance Abuse and Mental Health, and I already emailed you my long list of notes, that, you know, we can come back to it another time, but in your packet, I just wanted all of you to have what was given to us on the academic programs, education programs being offered there, and, you know, we can talk about it again at a later date, but there is a lot of similarities to the type of education support that they're trying to give the inmates. And, you know, you can add if you, if you want, Dave, but I, it was just a really impactful meeting, and we're still not alone in the struggles that we have. I mean, it brought together 45 of us from 30 different school committees, and even the committees that are representing wealthier districts like Wellesley and Goahaset are sharing some of their struggles. Sharon, Flaneville, Stoughton seem to have their eyes on Norwood, we're doing something right, because they were aware of like our override, they're aware of our collaboration with Impact Norwood. It's the first of many task force meetings.
So really briefly, number one, just a lot of the people that are inmates have had challenges growing up with undiagnosed mental issues, and causes self-medication leads to prison. So I think it's beginning of forming some sort of coalition of school committees and corrections to help the state understand that we need more money for intervention early on, because there is no other safety net available anymore. So we are that line of defense to keep good people from going to jail eventually.
They said currently, they're 80% of their inmates have, who have an addiction, a substance abuse disorder, also have a co-diagnosed mental health disorder, 80%. And then he also, another staggering statistic for me was that they're working really hard, they're doing amazing things, but their model is only 50% successful of once inmates are released that they're not coming back.
And it's 90% for women.
It's what?
It was 80% for the men, 90% for women.
Yeah, so at, at, at the facility, we were at the only house males, but they are, they're partnerships with female.
So we'll have a lot of good things coming out of that.
Yeah, it was positive. Consent agenda.
Consent agenda, we have donations for, from the Women's Community Committee, $600 in gift cards to the Callahan School, Cleveland School, the Oldham School, the Prescott School, and the Middle School. Ohio Prince, that is selling of spirit wear online for $105.79. The Harry Bruceal, Bruceades, charitable fund isn't, sorry?
Bruceades.
Bruceades, $500, and those are teacher grants. And the Abdallah family has donated $200 to the Ball School in memory of George Cornack Jr., and I think that is a classmate of Mrs. Abdallah Bannigan. So those were our donations for this week. Motion through?
On second discussion?
All in favor?
Thank you.
School committee agenda, Dave, did you have anything?
Oh, yeah, really quickly, thank you very much to Callahan for hosting us, it's really been a pleasure to see your excellent school, and all of us, if you haven't seen it yet, have wonderful notes from the students, so we really appreciate that, as well as these lovely plants that I, I will do my best to keep alive and blossoming over winter. So this is the last meeting before Thanksgiving, so I wish everyone a happy and safe Thanksgiving, let's beat GetEm. And thank you very much to Representative John Rogers for going to, you know, really on our behalf to, to get this educational funding that we desperately need. So we really do appreciate the hard work you guys for our community.
Maia, chat. I have nothing, nothing this evening, Joan?
Real quickly, I had the opportunity to go to back to school. The high school invited leaders from the community to come back to school, and I was able to see the honors robotics class with Dr. Crowley, and I was able to see the global citizens program with the vice principal, and I think we should all just be really proud of the work that our high school kids are doing, it blew me away. And I will be trying to post some pictures on Friends in North School, so, and an update around that, so, yeah, tomorrow, definitely tomorrow.
Not tonight.
Not tonight, definitely tomorrow, but we should all really be proud of all of the different ways that all of our students are being actively involved, so.
Great. I don't have anything tonight, I'm going to spur through the meeting. Oh, so you do have this in your packet, thank you, Dr. Thompson. That is for Friday's MASC training that we have, please don't forget, 4 to 6 o'clock, I know that's not the best time on a Friday, but that's when we have it, with Dorothy Pressner at Savage Center, and that's our contract training and strategy session that we have with her. So I do know we are going to go in executive session briefly for some discussion around the superintendent contract. Was there any other contracts we needed to talk about tonight, Dr. Thompson?
We can do that on Friday.
We can do that Friday, perfect. So we are going to go into executive session, return just for the purpose of adjournment. Our motion?
Motion to go into executive session.
Okay, and I need the poll, or second, second by Maia, Joan?
Yes.
Maia?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Myself, yes. All right, good night, and thank you, everybody.